Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. This is the February 13th, 2025 Town and Fishkill Planning Board meeting. So would you all please stand and join me in the pledging allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the record for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice
All right. As we always remind everyone, please silence your cell phones and speak clearly into the microphone when speaking so everyone else can hear us. Let's see. We have a couple of regular members absent tonight, Felix Lopez and Robbie Ladala, and also alternate member Kevin O'Connell weren't able to make it tonight. So I would like to hereby appoint alternate member VJ Gopel for being a voting member for tonight's meeting. Thank you, VJ. And also, I would like to introduce Dennis Lynch from MJ Engineering. Dennis will be working with the planning board as our engineer. So Dennis, if you want to just give us a real short introduction of yourself.
Yeah, Dennis Lynch with MJ Engineering. Been working in throughout the Duchess County area for the past 18 years on both this side of the bench and the other side of the bench. MJ for the past four years, and just looking forward to work with the board.
Welcome.
Dominic, good to have you here. And also, I'll just mention that we, the board may go into executive session toward the end of tonight's meeting to discuss the possible hiring of a consultant. So, but that'll be very close to the end of the meeting. All right, so let's get started on the agenda. We have one request for an extension of approval. That's the Continental Commons Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. The board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on January 17, 2025, which is a request for a second 90-day extension of the resolution of conditional final approval adopted by the board on December 14, 2023, going backwards. The board granted the first 90-day extension of the resolution of conditional final on November 14, 2024, and that's set to expire March 14, 2025. Welcome. And if you could just give us a brief explanation for the second request for the extension?
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Corey Salomon from Xyron and Stymets here tonight on behalf of the applicant. We made a submission this morning, a letter that just responds to all the outstanding conditions demonstrating how we satisfied them, and we also submitted plans for signing of the chairman. So we think we would have enough time, but just in an abundance of caution, we didn't want to run up against the expiration date.
Okay. All right. Dominic, do you have any questions or comments?
It would be my recommendation that the board grant the approval.
Any questions?
The extension, rather.
Right. Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
Anything big hanging up?
No. No, like I said, we made a submission this morning. We think that we are all set, and it's just really just in an abundance of caution.
And the bond play?
I've got the letter credit in my red will right now.
Okay.
All right. So could we have a motion to approve the request for a 90-day extension of the resolution of conditional final site development plan approval for Continental Commons? That would go till June 12, 2025 if necessary. Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we have six votes on that. All right. We're going to project reviews now. We have Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Redesign, Site Development Plan, a Special Use Permit, Board to Review CPL's Traffic Impact Study Memorandum dated January 8, 2025, and the submission made by the applicant's representative on January 29, 2025. So I'm going to recuse myself, as I have in the past, on discussions of Duchess Manor. And I'll ask Vice Chair Anthony Brozier to fill in as chair for this matter tonight. Thanks, Anthony. I'll be right out there if you need me.
Good evening.
Good evening. Should I start?
So I was hoping CPL would be here for this discussion item, not?
Any minute.
Any minute. Okay. So while we're waiting, if you wouldn't mind just giving a brief update. It has been a couple of months since you've been before the board.
Yeah, good evening. Board Vice Chair Aaron Werner from AKRF, planning consultant for the applicant. Yes, it has been a while. We did, I did want to give an overview of where the plans stand and also how we got to this point with the traffic review, because that was really our last submission was follow-up on the traffic study. So I would like to start just by saying that, you know, our engineers, they are currently working on some design changes to the site. So that's been holding up the response to CPL's, I think, comments back from October at this point, engineering-related comments. The delay is mainly due to, you know, they're doing some value engineering to make sure they make some modifications to address, to be responsive to feedback they've gotten from the neighbors on visibility and some other considerations. So the engineers expect to have that back in probably for the May meeting. So, and in relation to that, we have, we might have to update the Part 1 EAF to catch things up, grading numbers, impervious versus pervious areas, things like that. The parking's not expected to change, but some site information might need to be updated in the EAF. So with that in mind, you know, we're not asking for any action on SEAKER tonight. We're, we're just wanted to talk about the traffic study and, you know, the comments that we got from CPL. So with that, we did appear on December 12 to go over the December 9 review that was done by CPL. Our traffic study was submitted in November. CPL didn't have any substantive comments on that. Decided it met the standard. They agreed with the conclusions. And then at the December meeting, the vice chair did raise some concerns and questions that CPL then responded to with a memo dated January 8. One of the main things we did in response to that was we did the left turn lane warrant analysis that was recommended by CPL, and that's what was submitted for this meeting. It was a supplement to the traffic study. We did complete that pursuant to the ASHTO standard. That's the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Official Standard. It compares projected northbound and southbound volumes. With the project in place, against the threshold established by ASHTO, that analysis concluded that the thresholds for a left turn lane actually would be satisfied during the Saturday and Sunday midday and PM peak hours. So the warrant shows that it's warranted. Again, it's DOT's call. It's their road. If that's something they want to see done as part of the permitting process, they can certainly ask for that. To be proactive, we have started conversations with them about this. We've shared our traffic study with them. We've shared the warrant analysis with them. The engineers on the project are looking into the feasibility of the right-of-way in that area to see if there's enough room to make it happen and not impact the site design plans. So that's all currently in process. I don't have more of an update than that. But again, you know, CPL, like, we agree with them that it's not necessarily because it showed as warranted, DOT has to ultimately approve that. With regard to the speed limit, comments that were made at the December 12 meeting, the applicant's actually already taken a step to talk to the town supervisor to get something to DOT requesting the reduction in speed limit for that area of 9D. So that's also in the works. So that's really what I have as far as an update. We got the latest memo from CPL, the February 3 memo, and, you know, we agree with everything. And like I said, we are looking into that turn lane as a possibility.
Appreciate that. Thank you. You covered a lot of the things that I was going to touch on and even ask about. So thank you for the update, especially on the DOT correspondence. I think that was, that was a question that I had as well. Also, just to recap, at the December meeting, this board declared itself lead agency. So that has been, that has been addressed. As you mentioned, we, at the last meeting, we discussed the traffic impact study, went through CPL's initial round of comments and several comments from the board. So tonight's meeting would be to really focus on CPL's January 8 memo and then the, like you said, the February 3, the second, the second memo. Before I ask CPL to provide a summary of their comment letters and their substantive comments, I did want to make note that we did receive two email correspondences yesterday from the public, one from Kathy Kotzius and one from Aaron Sign.
I thought we got one today.
If we got one today, I didn't see, there were two yesterday. Those are the ones I-
It was later today, this, late this morning.
Oh, I mean, I work, so.
No, no, no. It basically forwarded the other email.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know. But both do reference, I guess all three of them reference the same concerns centering on the traffic impact study perceived for the application, for this application. And there were also quite a few comments related to the Fjord Trail, which is not in this board's purview.
Uh huh.
So I do want to make that clear. There were some comments to both. With that said, I guess at this point, I, if Liz, you're ready.
I'm here. No, it's okay. I just-
Yeah, so I did want to, you know, give CPL an opportunity to, you know, go over some of their more substantive comments from the, the two memos of January 8 and February 3.
Okay. So, yeah. So, you know, that's been the sequence lately is that we've been focused on the traffic issues.
Correct.
And my impression from the February 3 memorandum is that David Hastings, our traffic specialist, is basically saying that the left turn lane warrant analysis doesn't meet the warrants. So there's no-
It does meet it.
It does meet.
For the Saturday afternoon and-
Right.
Midday and afternoon periods.
Yep. It's the weekend peak hours where it meets the warrants.
Correct.
And then again, he's, he's reiterating that if a turn lane warrants are met, it doesn't necessarily mean that a signal or some kind of traffic control would be absolutely needed. And he's citing the queue lengths of estimated at two vehicles for northbound left turns, which wouldn't appear to be a site condition that would necessitate, you know, a separate left turn lane in that part of the road. Doesn't mean, it couldn't happen. It just means the likelihood isn't there. And then I kind of just went back in the folder because I thought, I wondered whether we were getting close to a point of doing any seeker step, but really, we're not, we're not there because there is a memorandum that's more general and has a lot more comments about the plans. And I looked at it today to just kind of go through, and a lot of the planned comments would sort of dovetail into seeker. So I think what we really need is, is a more comprehensive submittal to kind of move forward. You probably already said that while you were there.
Yeah. We're looking at possibly by the May meeting, having that in, and it's going to have some changes. So the EAF might have to catch up. So we agree, we don't, we're not asking for any seeker movement at this point. Declaring lead agency was fine. We'll continue to work on the plan and-
I should have just saved time by saying what he said earlier, but I didn't.
Yeah. That's perfectly fine. It's not a problem. So I, I mean, I had provided some comments at the, the last meeting we had here. I don't know if, I'd like to just open it up to board members if there are any additional comments related to the, to the traffic study that they, they'd like to make at this time. Like to just open it up to the board.
There's like usually a grade of existing traffic, right? That's there that they compare to? Like if it's an F or a D or an E? What is this traffic's grade right now?
Oh, off the top of my head?
Yeah, I can skip that.
I have another concern.
Traffic studies typically study intersections or incapacity, and the intersection at question here is the driveway with 9D. So that's what was studied. At the recommendation of CPL, we did the study pursuant to their scope that they gave us. With the project, it's going to be a level of service B, which is an acceptable level of service. You know, D, E, and F is usually not great, but this is a B.
Yeah, I just, just wondered, because, you know. I, I understand traffic studies and everything else, but it's like the smell and eye test and driving and doing it, it doesn't always seem to make the same thing because it's statistical math and random things and, you know, everything else. So I, I can understand why people feel have a thing about traffic studies because they don't always trust them a lot.
Yeah, well, there's engineers with credentials in doing them, that on a CPL side and our side that, you know, have a lot of experience with it, so.
I guess the other thing that came to mind because of public commentary, I wasn't aware of the Mirbo project.
The which project?
Spa. It's Mirbo, Mirabo project. It's in Beacon. It's southern end of Beacon. I want to see it.
Oh, you're talking about the old Craig House?
Yeah. Yep. That's it.
Thank you. That we know is the Craig House.
Right. Because it's theoretically construction in 2024 from old news. But as far as I could tell, just from little bits and pieces, I think it's either approved or near approval. I don't know. So I felt a little concerned about that, but I did, you know, pull up the mapping and just look. It's, it's about 1.9 miles from the intersection of the proposed site driveway for this project up to where I think it's Grant Street meets Route 9D. So they're not so close, but still, it depends on the source of their customers. Are they all coming up from New York City? And if they're coming up from New York City, are they going to go up 9D, which?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I don't know. I drive down to Peaks Kill and I go over and go down nine because 9D is so slow and crazy. But, but you're right, they might be coming up 9D, so.
Are you talking about having that, should have, talking about that as like a no-action background project in the traffic study?
I guess it, I think it should be looked at.
I think, I mean, we were, when we asked CPL to provide the feedback for what we, how we should do it, we asked for that kind of info too, if there's anything else we need to know about as background, and there wasn't anything provided. But we did assume 1% background each year, year over year, up to the 2027 build year. So that's going to get you a 3% increase in volumes along 9D, and it's a heavily volume road right now. So I think we're probably capturing it with that conservative background growth rate.
Can I ask a question about, that's a 55 mile an hour, and people go 55 miles or 60 miles an hour on that road.
They can.
Or whatever.
If they can do it, they do.
Plus to that. And traffic time. I, I used to go there for a lot of functions, Duchess Manor, but we normally went there in the evening after, after things. I don't remember ever going there for daytime, but maybe I did. All right? And I was always coming south. So I, you know, I had a feeling about that. But when you, when you're going northbound on that lane, there has to be some sort of signage that you guys are going to be putting up way ahead of time to alert, and I don't know if you could have, because that's on nine, that's on a state highway. But people are going to break hard to make that left-hand turn.
Well, part of the comments that CPL had from January was that in response to the concerns about potential for, you know, accidents and acceleration, rapid acceleration and deceleration around that intersection, that, you know, increased signage and a reduction in the speed limit could help with that. And that's why we went, the applicant actually went ahead and has talked to the town supervisor, Fishkill, to talk to DOT about starting the process of getting that stretch reduced to 55.
Well, I understand the stretch, but you know, even so, of course, it's a straight, you know, it's-
Well, DOT, if they consider it, they would have to put up the appropriate signage. If it means flashing beacons about, you know, upcoming speed changes, it's up to them, but.
Yeah, but again, it's a, like, it's an accident waiting to happen, but people are not really seeing it ahead of time to make that turn. Because I'm assuming along that way with the other project, which we're not talking about, but other parking going along the way, I don't know what they're doing about that. You know, you have parking just outside of, north of Cold Spring, which is existing now for the hikers.
Right.
And then they always parked all the way along the road right now.
Yeah, that's what this project is trying to eliminate.
Eliminate.
That's the purpose of it with a short-term plan, yeah.
But it's, they're going to have to know where that parking is. And I find, even when I'm coming through Cold Spring to go to that parking on the right-hand side, just outside, just north of the village, you really don't see it until you're on it. And at that point in time, no one's going fast. So again, just a concern.
Got it.
And I think, no, go ahead. I don't know of many people who trust any of the traffic studies that we do in Fishkill. Honestly, I know it's not your fault, but it's laughable because anybody who travels through Fishkill, we have a problem. And that stretch of road that you're talking about is a problem. It's been a problem for 50 years. I can think without even batting an eyeball of five people I know that died on that road. And that was before there's all these things that are turning in and Liz brought up a great point. It's not going to be people from Beacon going there. It's going to be people who aren't familiar with the area, and they're going to be driving, and all of a sudden, it's right there. Maybe they need a stoplight. I'll be the first person to say, maybe they should consider a stoplight on that road. I don't know. It's a hairy, carry road. It's straight. People think they can go fast, and then all of a sudden, at the end, there's that sharp turn, and it's, it's a little scary. And if you don't know where you're going, that would be my main concern, absolutely. And I wonder how they're going to fix it. And eventually, whether they say a left lane has to go in or not, at some point, they're going to be changing that road because they're going to find that that study didn't work the way they thought it was supposed to. Like Bob said, it's all map and statistics.
Yeah, it's a two-lane, I mean, I've been traveling that road because when I first moved up here, we'd go down 9D to go to Jersey through whatever that way, Palisades.
Yep.
And back then, there was nobody down there. And it, like I said, it's a two-lane road. There's not a lot of place to put stuff. So I, I get why the concerns of the local citizens and stuff and, you know, more and more people are using the trails, they're going to Mount Beacon, they're going all over the place. And she's right, it's out-of-towners more, and, you know, it's okay. It's not, you know, dissing anybody, but they're coming, and I, I think it is a big concern of, you know, the traffic, you know, they're talking about the parking and the spaces. I see that's another concern and everything else. It's definitely gone up to a raise. And like you said, right now, them parking on their side of the road is not a good idea. And that's what they're doing, and that's what they've been doing.
Yeah.
But it's scary sometimes. Because, I mean, really, people are cruising on that road.
Right. Well, this, like I said, this is, the purpose of this parking lot is to address that issue, safety issue and access. So, but as far as, you know, 9D, I understand, I'm not the traffic engineer that did the study. I'm just, I'm representing the AKRF on this. I could have him provide more information, but, you know, again, it's, we, we had a traffic camera up during peak hiking season, taking counts. We have accurate existing conditions. We did the right methodology for the traffic study. DOT is an involved agency for your review of this, and they're involved on the Fjord Trail EIS review as well. So they're aware of what's happening along the road. It's their road, and there's permitting issues that they have to deal with, and they'll probably-
I know. I mean, the DOT has to deal with what they have as structure because I, I can tell you, I drive down 684 every day, and I know 35 years ago that they would change the bottleneck in Katona, and 35 years later, it's still the same way. And there's traffic, and it's just gotten worse. So I don't have a real lot of faith with the DOT either about what they do. So I, I'm just, we're just explaining stuff, so.
It would be helpful to know that, that the DOT was doing something about this as we get later on as part of our consideration of an approval, if, if nothing was going to be-
I feel like this is-
Again, it's not our, it's not our road to decide what's going to happen there, but it would be helpful, I think, to this board to know, hey, yes, something is going to be done. DOT is going to implement some sort of change.
Right.
Or no, they're not, and this may be an unsafe project if, if so. So I think that's something that just needs to, you know, as this plays out, we just need to kind of think about that, and hopefully we get some, you know, updates from DOT, and we can hear that maybe there is some progress toward a, a safer alternative mitigation, something like that.
Ben, as a lead agency, you're perfectly, you know, allowed to ask them for, for comment again. And I think if we have, if we have a new site plan that comes in with some modifications that I'm talking about, you might consider referring that to them because it's a new information issue, or they might want to just see it and keep their records going.
Maybe a letter from the planning board voicing some of these concerns to the DOT and/or a letter from the supervisor.
I would like to see, and it kind of goes to my, what I was, wanted to say later on, and you had mentioned earlier of, you know, we have not seen an updated overall site plan since October.
Yes.
So, you know, Aaron had mentioned at the very beginning that they're making some changes. We don't know what those changes are. They were briefly kind of mentioned. I'd like to see what those are. I think the board would need to see what those are. You know, our consultant team would absolutely need to.
Yeah.
And I think at that point, then we can decide whether or not we need to maybe prepare something to, to a DOT to kind of encourage them to, to take a harder look.
And I'm wondering whether, even if the, you, go ahead.
I was just going to say, what I can tell you at this point is that we don't think that the total number of spaces is going to increase or decrease. The access is staying the same. It's really just position of the lot, the parking, some landscaping, grading issues, circulation on site, providing some more buffering for the neighbors, things like that. That's what's being looked at, not changes to the total number. That's why the traffic study can still probably hold with what it looked at with the 181 spaces, which includes overflow, so.
Well, I guess the question that I, go ahead.
You know, at the very beginning, since I'm an RV-er, I asked if they were going to have any parking for RV, and I never saw it added at all. Or you could have put a sign up that said, no RV parking? Or they're going to take up two spots or three spots? It depends upon the type of RV they have.
Can ask the client about that. I'm not sure what the, what the plan is right now.
And I never saw it added to the, up until, I haven't seen it added yet. Or something to put up that said that no RVs are allowed.
Okay. I'll take that back to the team.
Sorry, Liz. You're up.
No, no, no. It's fine. It's fine. So I know that, you know, our traffic engineer, you know, was talking about whether or not something meets the warrants for this, that, or the other thing. But it sounds like from local knowledge, we're talking about an area where people are, they're coming up and they're just going at a certain rate of speed and not thinking much about it and not expecting to have to worry about it because they're out in the country. And I'm wondering if there could be encouragement for a progression of decreasing the speed getting close to the site? Because it is, there, I mean, I believe there's going to be at least one pedestrian crossing. Isn't there a trail nearby?
Not that I'm aware of.
Across the road?
I don't think that's proposed with this project, no.
I thought I had seen a painted crosswalk. And this is, and this is why we need to see, I think, an updated, an updated plan set at this point. It's been since October.
I thought there were more trails because, and also because I recall parking on kind of like a bank of rocks and crawling up the rocks to get to the road and cross to go to a trail. I, I don't know where all the trails are, but that, that trailhead, I mean, the whole point of the facility is that it's near the beginnings of trails, I think. And I know it's going to be partly a new trail, but I would think some of it has to do with safer parking and access to the trails that you can get onto in that area. That's-
Right, the existing ones. And there's not one right now that goes across the 9D from the project.
But there, there must be something across the road somewhere because-
I'm not aware of one.
-where the mountains are.
You know, you know what you're saying is that this is on the riverside, and the water trails are on the mountainside.
Yeah.
Except for the forge trail, which we saw designs of way back when, which is going to go through this property.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that is where all the trails are.
So if anybody's going to go over to the mountainside to climb, there has to be some way for them to do that.
Well, there is, in the, as we discussed in the EAF, I think, the narrative, there is a planned shuttle service to the existing trail system from this lot when it's in place.
So it's shuttle, shuttle stops to exist...
Tell people who are not waiting for the shuttle, go walk.
That, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Some people are very anxious, they're not gonna wait.
That would be discouraged, but...
So I, I think that's been part of, at least my personal frustration with how this has been going, you know, the CPL memo from October 9th has kind of been hanging out there, and we've taken this like four-month journey on just the traffic study, and we really haven't talked about anything else. And I, I really feel like a lot of the discussion kind of needs to have that, that plan set alongside of it. And I think this four-month diversion into the traffic study has been frustrating not only to this board, but to, to the public as well, and...
I mean, it is an important issue, of course.
It is, no doubt, but I mean, to not, to not have the plans at the forefront, I think is really taking away from the review that needs to be conducted of such an important site that has potential for significant impacts.
Yep, and to get back to the big picture.
Absolutely. So, you know, there's a lot of items in, you know, the memo from October that need to be brought to the forefront. And, you know, the increase in, you know, the parking is still a large number, and from what I understand, that's not changing, that's still a large concern for me. Hours of operation, noise, impact on adjacent properties. Now, I know some of that had been mentioned at the beginning here, but these are all things that, that really need to be kind of discussed along with the, the traffic study, in my opinion. So I don't see the board taking any further action tonight.
No.
But, you know, I think before we wrap up here, you know, if the board has any other additional comments, I, I don't have any at this point. I'll open up to the board for any final comments, and then I'd just like to ask Dominic if there's any other thoughts as well, so.
No, I think the, you know, Aaron had mentioned that they, they're working on revised plans. They intend to submit them hopefully for, in time for the May meeting, I believe is what you said.
Yep.
So along with that would come a presumably a proposed revised EAF if the impacts have changed for the projects, so the board will be able to evaluate that at, at this time. I think by being here and hearing the concerns that the applicant, you know, is mindful of matters that are of concern to the board as well as to the public in light of the continuing correspondence that the town has been receiving in connection with that. And so we'll see how the revised plans shake out.
Any other final thoughts from the board this evening?
And I'm assuming that, you know, offline consultation, if it's needed, is still happening.
That's already been authorized, I think, at a previous meeting, so that would be unchanged from, at least from my standpoint, unless Debbie believes we need to...
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thanks so much, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
So while John makes his way back into the room, the next item on our agenda this evening is Johnson Trails, five-lot subdivision. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on January 29th, 2025. Also a draft resolution of conditional final approval and to consider its adoption. Good evening.
Good evening. Albert Roberts for the applicant. Regrettably, our engineer had another commitment and he is out of town. I have read the preliminary resolution of subdivision approval. On behalf of the applicant, we have no objections. We have reviewed the reports of both engineers, and we are committed to comply with all of their requests. We respectfully ask that the resolution be adopted.
All right, well, we do have a memo from MJ Engineering. So Dennis, why don't you go through that?
Going through our memo dated February 11th, we go through and outline that Seeker was an listed action, that the forehead has a negative declaration on the project, it's not subject to GML. As far as the plans, we had some general comments that the plans should be signed and sealed by a design professional. There are, there's a memo from CPL dated January 7th. The applicant should adequately address all the outstanding comments on that. There, as far as the design, there's some additional soil testing that needs to be done on-site, we did make note of that. There was another note that we put on here, just that the, there's a new stormwater regulations that are, a new permit that's out there, just that the applicant's aware of that. There is a grace period within the design, so the, the current design is fine, that will be grandfathered in as, as part of the new speedies permit. Going through, we noted that there, there will be more than five acres of disturbance, so there is a SWIP that would need to be filled as part of that. We go through, the applicant had provided a performance bond that we are in agreement with and made a recommendation for the bond. And then we went through the inspection fees based upon the town code of what the inspections fees should be. That's, that's a quick review of our letter, if there's any comments the board wants to go into deeper detail with, I think.
Yeah, any questions for Dennis or the applicant?
No comments.
All right. Okay, well, why don't we ask our attorney, Dominic Cordisco? Well, first of all, Dominic, if you have any questions on any of the legal documents that were submitted, the draft documents?
No, I had already reviewed those. Mr. Roberts had provided copies prior to the submission to the board, has been previously authorized by the board for him to do so, and had reviewed and provided prior comments on those. I find them to be in acceptable form and had no concerns or questions in connection with the documents.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Well, why don't you go ahead then and summarize the draft resolution for us?
Yes, so this is draft number four. It's dated February 11th. That was the version that was circulated to the board and to the applicant. As Dennis had mentioned, this project already had received a negative declaration and had previously received preliminary approval back in January of 2023. And then it was inadvertently allowed to expire, but the board reissued it in September of 2023, so the preliminary approval has been in effect since that time with regular extensions that have been occurring. So all that is laid out in the resolution that, that you have before you, as well as all of the rest of the relevant history up to this point. The conditions include, the standard conditions, I'll run through them fairly quickly. One is addressing the outstanding engineering comments, which Mr. Roberts has said that they would do. These are the approvals by other agencies, which at this point have been reduced from what was originally identified in the preliminary approval resolution to the Duchess County Department of Health for the water supply and on-site sewage disposal and as well as coverage under the New York State DEC's speedies permit. The dedications, which have been provided in draft form to the town, must also have to be reviewed and approved by the town board following their review by the town attorney and the town engineer and the highway superintendent. We do indicate that the recording of the deeds may occur simultaneously with the filing of a signed plat, because that would make sense to go with one package rather than record things without releasing the plat prior to that time. There is a street improvement performance bond required, and let me stop you here. So one of the things that we had to do with this particular resolution was, this is the first time that I've been, since I've been representing the board and spent several years now, that we actually had a subdivision where we had dedications that were going to occur as far as public streets. And so we wanted to be, make sure that we were capturing everything, and one of the things that you don't typically see in one of your resolutions is, is the, for instance, the street improvements.
One street.
And so here, we have a performance bond, the amount of which is $157,250. This is to secure to the town, the applicant's ability to undertake the satisfactory construction, installation, and completion of the road improvements. So that is something that you normally don't see in your resolutions because you're not dealing typically with public street improvements and extensions like you are seeing here.
Yeah, the board hasn't seen one of these actually in quite a while also.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. So we wanted to make sure that we were thorough in capturing all of these things. We also have a stormwater maintenance agreement for, and once again, that's for the town board's approval. You have a stormwater construction completion guarantee. There is the tree preservation plan, so the agreement for that has been provided by the applicant as both identified on the subdivision set as well as in the offer that has been, that will be recorded in the chain of title. You have the standard conditions regarding signing the owner's consent and the approval block. We have inspection fees as well that have been identified. There is the recreation fee. Here, we have four new building lots that are effectively being created as a result of this five-lot subdivision. And so the recreation fee, since no parkland is being provided, has been identified as $20,000, which is $5,000 per new lot multiplied by four lots.
And so the rationale for the four new lots is that there already is one large existing lot, so even though this is a five-lot subdivision, it's still four new lots.
Correct, correct. And there's also a requirement that all fees are paid and escrow deposits are made, and that this approval will be binding on the applicant as well as any and all successors and interests.
Dominic, we received in this morning's emails, approval from the health department. Apparently it got lost in the health department. I, I will submit it in due course, but we received it this morning.
Mazel tov.
That's good to know.
Anything we get from the health department is good news.
Before I ask the board if there are any questions on the resolution, one very minor correction on page three in the outstanding, outstanding engineering comments referring to the recent letter we received, should say February 11th, I think, because there was a replacement letter from the original February 10th letter.
Correct.
So we'll correct that to say February 11th, 2025. Okay. All right, any questions or comments on the resolution?
I see that they did name the road.
Yes, that's on...
Up until now, they didn't have that. So it's Johnson Court?
Johnson Court. Yeah. I think, also I remember back a while ago during the review, we had talked about the naming of the street, and so that's now showing up on the, on the final plat. Okay. So if no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve and adopt the draft resolution of conditional final subdivision approval for the Johnson Trails five-lot subdivision as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
Joe moves.
Bob moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is basis industrial Route 9D site development plan and special use permit. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on January 27, 2025, and a draft resolution of conditional final approval and to consider its adoption. Welcome back again.
Thank you.
So there was, there were some, I guess, minor or slightly new revisions in your January 27th supplemental. Do you want to just quickly describe what happened in that?
Sure. For the record, Corey Salomon again from Zaren &amp; Stymets, and I'm just gonna pass it off to Zach Cam from Dynamic to go through those changes.
Thanks, Corey. Good evening, everyone. Zach Cam from Dynamic Engineering for the record. The plan changes were pretty minimal. We did meet with Liz from CPL to discuss a few of the comments. We made some minor modifications to a few of the notes on the plan per her comments. And then we also have been meeting with the water and sewer department, so we have updated some of the water and sewer configurations slightly, just to accommodate some of those conversations. One thing to note is, we requested to extend a water line across Route 9D, which we have now included on the plan. And that, of course, will pen DOT approval.
Thank you. All right, so we have actually two memos from our consultants. So first, we have CPL's memo dated January 27th from Liz Axelson. So Liz, if you could very briefly go through that.
So first, I'm just reiterating Seeker was adopted, and then this is an update on the conditions of June 13, 2024 approval. And so some of our remaining comments, including, let's see, plan notation to ensure compliance with the most current architectural plan set, including aspects of facades. And then I had prior comments noting that Pappas Lane would need to be managed in some fashion, and the response letter indicated no objection to a condition of approval requiring a maintenance agreement to be executed and put on the record with the county clerk's office, which would also involve the bank as an adjoining owner being part of that. So that will have to be addressed. And then there's also a comment about having some signage along DOT, along Route 9D, according to DOT, to guide visitors, so that it's not just people kind of slamming on the brakes when they get there, but having some kind of a clue about traffic control changes coming up in that area. And comment number six has to do with an inspection fee, which is in accordance with zoning, special use permits. And let's see, there are two wall signs related to the car wash and the fast food restaurant. So those buildings right now, they're shown, the facades are shown pretty plain, same thing with the signs, you don't know the coloration yet. So both the fast food restaurant building and the car wash, ultimately, when they come forward in the design is, is clearer, the coloring, coloring of the sign, styles, et cetera, et cetera, those will require some kind of site plan amendment to address those. Let's see. And then we have a few remaining engineering comments, but I believe those would be addressed by you. And otherwise, there's an outstanding review of the eastern right-out only driveway at the gas station, and so that approval still needs to occur, and that will involve a NICE dot permit. So those are sort of the remaining details that have become conditions of approval.
All right, thanks, Liz. All right, let's go to MJ's engineering memo. Dennis, again, if you could just brief him some more.
We have our February 11th memo that we prepared. Again, we just went through Seeker, noting that it was type-one action and that the board issued a negative declaration. It would be, a GML would be required from its proximity to 9D. Going through, again, we all, we note that the applicant should address all outstanding engineering comments in prior CPL reviews. comments in prior CPL reviews. A general comment, just to be sure that any filed plans are signed and sealed by the appropriate design professionals. We make note that, you know, you will need, there's work within the right, the DOT right away, so it would be a DOT permit required for that. We note that the onsite water and sewer improvements would be need to be reviewed and approved by the board of health. Again, the applicant had provided bonds that we are in agreement with, and we provided the bond amounts for that. And then, again, the inspection fees based upon the town vote.
Okay. I'll just note, the GML referral to the county was made, and we did receive their response, which was under their local determination with comment letters. And also, there's just a minor typo in your memo referring to the site having access from Route 9, which would be 9D actually, so just to correct the record. All right. So any questions or comments from board members on what we've talked about so far?
No.
No.
All right. Okay. We will ask Dominic then to run through the draft resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in front of you draft number five dated February 11th. This is a resolution of conditional final approval for both the site development plan and special use permit for Basis Industrial Route 9D. The board had previously granted preliminary approval for the project as well as, as been mentioned, adopted a negative declaration. Negative declaration happened on April 11th, 2024, and then the preliminary site development plan approval and special use permit for the project happened on June 13th, 2024. That enabled the applicant to finish their process with the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board of appeals granted their approvals on November 19th of 2024. The applicant is now requesting that the board consider granting conditional final site development plan approval and special use permit approval. The resolution carries forward the findings that had been made previously as part of the preliminary approval for the project. The conditions that they have to satisfy prior to signing of the site development plan include addressing the outstanding comments in the review memorandum from the town engineer. They have to obtain the outside agency approvals, which includes the approval of the state DOT for the traffic improvements, as well as approval from Dutchess County Department of Health, and anything else that's been identified in the EAF that's necessary for the project that's not specifically enumerated herein. There is a performance bond that is required. There's also a maintenance bond required, and that is been identified in the amount of $3,972. This is in connection with the landscaping, so that would be for one year post issuance of certificate of occupancy, that, that amount must be kept on file with the town for the maintenance of that landscaping. There's an inspection fee of $57,221.61 that has been identified, and the standard conditions include, of course, signing the owner's consent note as well as the approval block and repayment of all fees that are, and escrows that are owed to the town. Those are all conditions that have to be satisfied prior to signing and releasing the site development plan. Then we have what we've developed as the standard conditions for getting to landscaping, screening, lighting, architectural design details. As Liz had mentioned, there is the likelihood of additional details coming forward when specific tenants have been identified for some of the uses on the site. And so when they have been identified, in all likelihood, the applicant will need to request a fairly minor, but nonetheless minor, site development plan amendment at that time, because only what is shown on the current set, plan set can be constructed. The applicant will have to comply and continuing compliance with the zoning board of appeals variance decision. There is, are the language that we've been including in our resolutions regarding limitation of use, so that only what has been applied for and shown on the plans is approved for the site, and any changes to that has to come back to the board. There is obviously also strict compliance with the mitigation measures that have been identified in the negative declaration that the board adopted on April 11th, 2024. We also included a road maintenance provision relating to Pappas Lane, and this is requiring the applicant, because there is no road maintenance agreement, that the applicant must maintain that portion of Pappas Lane that's used for accessing the site. They have to maintain it and repair it as necessary. And then lastly, that this resolution and the conditions that I just mentioned are all binding on the applicant as well as any successors and interests.
Before we get to questions or comments, again, one minor typo on page five under the inspection fees. So it's supposed to read in the written portion of it, 57,000, but the thousand was missing, and so I think we want to add that.
Ah, my apologies.
Could I make one comment on the resolution as well?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, now that we're done with that, and we'll, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll ask the board if there are any questions.
Sure. On page eight, number 16, it references the zoning board of appeals resolution. It has it as October 15th, 2024. It should be November 19th, 2024.
My apologies.
No worries.
Any questions or comments from the board?
The performance bond amount was outlined in MJ's letter. Do we, is that something we would work into this?
We have that amount from MJ. Do you want to quickly refer to that, Dennis?
It was the amount for which, the amount you looked for?
Performance. The performance bond, I think it was like 817,000 plus?
Yeah.
Yes. While he's looking for that, just so you know, that the performance bond that is required by the planning board, the language tracks the code which provides that the town board actually approves that amount, but for information purposes, it's identified by the town's engineer.
Yep, and that's 817, uh, 817,451 dollars.
Okay. And so the way we've been dealing with that, at least recently, in the resolutions for site plans, is that we will get the estimate of the performance bond recommended by our engineer, but it's a recommendation of the town board who then determines the actual amount. And I know that there have been occasions where the amount is changed by the town board, but this is our recommended amount. I know we used to put the amount in the resolutions, but since it's not a binding amount, it's up to the town board to decide.
That's fine. I mean, the language is in there, so.
Yeah.
It'll get addressed.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right. So is there a motion to approve and adopt the draft resolution of conditional final site development plan and special use permit approval for the Basis Industrial Route 9D application as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
Joe moves.
Second.
Fred moves it. Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that carries six to zero.
Thank you very much for all your time and efforts on the application. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for your participation. The next application is Chick-fil-A 18 Westage Drive Site Development Plan and Town Zoning Board of Appeals referral of application number ZB 25-001 for area variances. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on January 28, 2025, to consider declaring itself lead agency for the project's environmental review, and also to review the town official zoning board of appeals referral of application number ZB 25-001 Chick-fil-A Inc., Area Variances. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I know that you do have a January 28 submission, so if you would be kind enough to just let us know what that consisted of, what, what changes may have been made, and what your response letter indicated.
Sure. We can, we can start there, and we can go to SEAKER and then the ZBA after that.
Yeah.
So I'm John Candy from Whitman, Osterman, and Hannah here on behalf of Chick-fil-A. I'm joined by Tim Freitag of Bowler Engineering. So he'll walk you through his letter from the 28th, and then we'll be back.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tim Freitag with Bowler Engineering here on behalf of the applicant for a continued site plan review process here. On January 28th, a letter dated January 27 submission was in response to the various comments we received on the project to date. As part of that submission, I included some lighting cut sheets for the proposed lighting fixtures that are proposed on our site, downlit, dark sky compliant LED fixtures. We included some geotechnical investigation boring logs that justify the use of our infiltration stormwater practice on the site. We provided some fire truck and delivery truck turning movements navigating into the site and around our parking field, both for delivery vehicles and emergency vehicles. We submitted revised site development plans and provided, within our letter, responses to the comments that demonstrate how those site plans have changed. In high level, the plans are generally consistent with what this board reviewed previously. On the screen here is just a colored version of the site plan. Parking's in the same spot, building's in the same spot, drive-through's in the same spot as demonstrated at the last meeting, just a lot of technical tweaks. High level, we responded to engineering comments, stormwater comments, some utility comments, SWIP comments, and then we further explained some justification to the county planning comments. If you recall, there was some circulation confusion as demonstrated in their comment letter. They thought you had to navigate and circle the site twice essentially to get into the drive-through, but as we explained to this board at the last meeting, we've got an isolated drive-through layout here. The drive-throughs around the perimeter of the site maximizes the jet, or drive-through queuing capacity, but it also allows an isolated parking field in front of the store. Some of, the majority of guests can park in the middle of the parking lot, walk into the store, grab their meal, dine in should they wish, and walk back out to their car in the parking field without having to cross that drive-through traffic. So that's really the, the focal point of the design intent here with that isolated drive-through layout that we further explained in this comment letter in response to the county planning department comments. We further are in receipt of an updated memorandum from MJ Engineering. We've reviewed those comments after this meeting, similar to what we did on January 27th. We'll formally respond to those comments. We take no objection to the comments. I don't think we need to walk through each individual comment, but happy to elaborate more if anybody had questions on, on a certain one. I do want to just bring to everybody's attention for discussion the comments related to the delivery truck turning movements. So simply acknowledged in the MJ letter is those truck turning paths do cross some of the parking spots. So that's leading us to the question that, okay, is that going to be a concern? Can the truck get into our site if there's a car parked in those spaces? That's for our delivery vehicle. The delivery vehicle comes during off-hours, so there shouldn't be anybody parked in the parking lot during those deliveries, so we do not anticipate that's going to be an operational issue for us. Rather than having an extra wide drive aisle with more pavement, we think the conflict with just a handful of parking spaces for that delivery truck is acceptable. That's a high-level overview of the submission. I believe John was going to provide an update to the board based on our ZBA meeting. So since we were last here before the board, we did submit a formal ZBA application, and we introduced that to the zoning board. We did receive county comments back on our ZBA submission. So if the board would like, John could give an update on the ZBA meeting, or we could turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions before we get too far down the road here.
Yeah, let's hold off on the ZBA aspect of it because we have a whole section of that. We actually have a formal referral from the zoning board.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, why don't we go right to Dennis and MJ Engineering memo and see what we have.
Reading from our February 10 review. Again, for SEAKER, we noted that the planning board had classified this as an illicit action and has initiated the coordinated review on this on the 20th, 2024. Going through again, we just list that a GML would be required for its proximity to both Route 9 and to the village of Fish kills. Going through some of the technical questions, we, you know, the applicant did provide a pretty detailed removals plan. We just made a comment to make sure that, looking for a little more detail on sequencing of that, the demolition to make sure that, since this is one part of a larger site, that during any demolition, that no service interrupted to any of the adjacent stores during construction. We made note of the, the two variances that they would be requiring. Again, we had some technical questions on here regarding parking, creating just some minor things. And again, we had some comments on this construction sequencing, again, just making sure that the site was secure with a construction fencing and making sure that, that you'd have proper access to the remainder of the site while construction is underway. You did make mention of the delivery truck. We did note that there was some conflict with some of the parking spots, but it sounds like that there'd be off-hours, so there should be no issues with that. We did review the fire truck template that you provided. We have no comments, but we, you know, we defer to the fire department on their, their final sign off on that, and the remainder of our comments are relatively technical nature.
Thank you, Dennis.
And I will just add on to the concerns about maintaining access to the rest of the mall property. That's a requirement as part of this deal with ownership anyway, so there will certainly be phasing and maintaining both utilities, access, and parking for the rest of the center during the duration of this project.
So those are probably details we would need to see toward, you know, at the final plan review stage.
Sure.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members just on the site plan so far?
I have a small one. You described last time how people pick up their meals. I call in ahead of time. I park and walk in, or I go in the queue. I'm curious, which one is it?
Yeah, sure. So.
Because you have a lot of parking spots there, if everybody's going to just walk in and walk out.
Yeah. So if you order ahead, there's a mobile app that you can order ahead to have your meal prepared when you arrive. The way that works is you park, you walk into the store, you pick up your meal, and you go back to your car. What we talked about was the flexibility of a drive-through lane. Should the app become more than 25, 30% of your business, and there are certain markets where that's higher demand, some college campuses where you have a younger generation more on the mobile app than others, if that becomes plus or minus 30%, the app can tell you to go through the drive-through instead. So you'll get a notification rather than going inside. It'll say, pull through to drive-through lane two. That way, they can control the amount of people. That way, they can control the amount of people parking, walking into the store. They can keep everybody in their car if it is that high of a demand to use that second drive-through lane instead.
Thank you. That at least tells me how it works.
The default is you're going inside to pick up your meal.
The default is go inside. There are going to be dedicated lot, parking spots for just people who are going in to pick up, or is it just going to be open parking wherever you get it, for the people who order ahead?
That's a good question. I can follow up to see if there's going to be dedicated parking. Some location there are, and usually that's an operator's decision if they're going to dedicate a couple parking spots here. I'm not positive if there's any identified at this time, but I'll follow up with that question.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dominic, do you have any particular questions just on the site plan so far?
No, sir. Thank you for the opportunity.
One thing I wanted to bring up was this, we had discussed this, I think, at the last meeting, and both Duchess County Department of Planning and now DOT, in their letter dated December 19th, have recommended that additional sidewalk be built along West Merritt Boulevard to have better connectivity to Route 9. And, you know, I understand completely that there's a connection to Route 9 through the parking lot for pedestrians, but just given the comprehensive plan recommendations for enhancing areas like this for pedestrian connectivity, I'd kind of like to revisit this question about the sidewalk going along West Merritt Boulevard as well. I know in your response memo, you indicated that a sidewalk along West Merritt is not favorable at this time. But, you know, first of all, I'd like to know what that means exactly, and secondly, whether that is something that we could revisit, because I think it's actually kind of an important aspect of this particular area with, especially with all the actual change in the access road going along there. Something to kind of better define West Merritt Boulevard as an entrance, you know, I mean, people know it's an entrance into, you know, the whole shopping area that deals with Walmart and Sam's Clothes and all the other things in there, but it could also have some enhanced landscaping, street trees along there. So, I think it actually is a good idea. So, without getting into too long a discussion about that tonight, I'd just like to get a little bit more, you know, feedback from the applicant's point of view on whether that's a possibility. It looks like there is room for it to happen, and it might be an option for people who are coming from the other direction, from the north, to be able to somehow access the site a little bit easier. Anyway, these are just some ideas that I think really we should talk about some more at a future time. So, maybe give that some thought and report back to us on it.
Yeah, I'd like to take...
We also have, we also have in the back of the property, an apartment or apartment complex.
Correct, that's right.
So, people, how do they get to it? Do they want to walk?
Yeah, and since, I mean, the applicant obviously isn't responsible and can't be held responsible for extending the sidewalk all the way to the housing development, but at least if it went partway into the Merritt Boulevard access road, that might be a help.
Yeah, we can certainly take that back to mall ownership and have that discussion if they would be open-minded to that. A reminder that West Merritt Boulevard is actually a private road.
Yes.
So, we also have to go to that Development Transportation Corporation to discuss that request. Is there appropriate room along our frontage? I think so, between our driveway and West Merritt Boulevard, could we fit something in there? Probably. I will remind folks that New York State DOT is looking for a handout here. We're paying about $100,000-plus of pedestrian improvements at the Signalized Intersection with a traffic study that warranted no mitigation required. They submitted the letter, they requested the upgrades, we're willing to do that. So, I feel like the applicant's already paying a good share of public improvement and benefit. To, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, when you mentioned, you know, how far would we extend it to? I know that Dunkin' Donuts was recently developed to the west of us. There was no sidewalk positioned in front of that. Are you envisioning that we would take it to the relocated driveway location and provide connectivity for future build-out from there?
Yeah, that was my thought.
Sure. Okay, yeah, we can look at that.
I thought it was very interesting, actually, that this, in effect, new recommendation came directly from DOT in their most recent letter of December 19th, recommending that additional sidewalk be built along West Merritt to have better connectivity than sidewalk along Route 9. I'm glad to see that the state is thinking about those kind of things as well they should be, but it is something that the town of Fishkill is very interested in seeing, and so anything we can do to work with you on that, we'd be glad to have further discussions.
Sure, thank you.
Johnson, can I?
Sure, please.
So, I guess I heard the whole idea of people pulling up and coming in and getting their food, and I guess I'm looking at a pretty big parking area with a lot, like a whole row, right, you know, lined up with Route 9. And I guess the concern there is, will those spaces ever be used? You know, if people are going through the drive-through or pulling up, they're going to want the closest space, so there are some spaces pretty far away from that door. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity somewhere in there, you know, for the planning board to be able to grant a waiver of parking and instead maybe have some more, I don't know, maybe like an area of landscaping along there or some kind of a more informal pedestrian amenity? You know, if people are going to be, maybe they're going to eat out at a picnic table or something like that. Those are just some thoughts that I had, because it just seems, I understand that probably the reason that that much parking is shown has to do with parking requirements, but this isn't a place where people are parking and going inside to eat as much as they would at another type of restaurant. So, the parking requirements for a regular restaurant may be a little out of touch with this type of use. It's a different kind of operation. So, that's just a thought. I just looked at all that parking being concerned, and that's a cost, of course, for your development to have to produce all those. So, that's just a thought, if there's a way to look at that and consider reducing it and maybe...
I kind of like the fact of having a parking, because I think we pollute too much being in line in our car.
I hear that.
The whole green, the green thing, you know, it's like get up and walk and go get your food, instead of being in line and have your car run and run and run there, Starbucks, everybody's place, it comes, you know.
I hear that.
But they have 90 seats. They have 90 seats in the restaurant they're planned.
That's what I was going to mention.
You know...
This user does need this much parking.
You have 90 seats, that's a, that's a lot of cars.
Yeah, this user does need a lot more parking than your average quick-serve restaurant. They have the indoor seats. A lot of folks do bring their families here. It's a nice family restaurant in addition to the quick-service component. And then during peak hours, they have employee shift overlaps. So, peak hour, you might have two shifts overlapping during the peak hour to provide additional support. So, you may have 25 staff in the kitchen at one time.
Right, yep.
That eats up a lot of that parking. And this is a parking lot today. So, if you remember, as part of the redevelopment project here, we're tearing down a former restaurant. We're shifting the access drive further west, further away from the signal, and utilizing an area that's just a blank parking lot today to kind of bring the business up there to better utilize those parking spots that do sit vacant quite a bit today. So, we're bringing the service up to that usable parking lot. The project, it results in a net loss of two parking spots from existing today. So, it is a reduction of parking from what's there today. We're adding a drive-through component, so there's more stacking in the drive-through, but there's a restaurant today, there's going to be a restaurant tomorrow with the loss of two parking. Parking's also tied to the lease agreement with the mall. The mall continues to see new investment, new tenants, and also has a parking requirement they want to keep for that flexibility to make sure that they can serve their tenants too.
So, they're looking for the overflow, I guess, on your site?
There is shared opportunity.
The far end?
Yes.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay.
However, I think in following up on Liz's comments, there might be some more opportunities within the parking area to enhance at least where that pedestrian crossing is coming in. And I think we had talked before about, and maybe the county might have recommended, to add some curbing of the area of the crosswalk.
The striped area.
The striped area, instead of just striping it, putting some better demarcation. And even if they were like drop curbs maybe, because if, in fact, the delivery trucks are going to be going...
That's right.
...across there, that's one reason not to have full curbs, but if there were drop curbs, would that work perhaps?
Yeah, we looked at adding green space there, but unfortunately with the truck simulations, we need a mountable curb there, but we could do a raised mountable concrete curb with the mountable angled curb to do better protection there if that's preferred.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. One of the plans says 75 seats, another plan says 90 seats in the same square footage. Is it 75 or 90?
So, the building prototype just changed, so the latest drawings have that count. So, it's 90 seats, 90 seats, yep. But we can add that mountable curb to that internal island.
Yeah, that would be great.
I was actually, like, my daughter lives in Danbury, so there's still one out there, and I was very shocked to see how many people went in to eat.
Yeah.
I'd like to testify to that.
They're busy, yeah, yep.
Good. Well, so one thing I think we do have to do is a motion for the planning board to be, to declare itself lead agency. So, we classified the proposal as an unlisted action previously and circulated a notice of intent. More than 30 days has passed on that, and we have not received any objections. So, I'd like a motion declaring that the Town Official Planning Board will serve as lead agency to conduct a coordinated environmental review under Seeker for the proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant. Would somebody like to move that?
It's a move.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we are now officially the lead agency. Okay, so now we're going to get to the area and sign variances. And again, this was an actual referral from the ZBA to the planning board. So, the zoning board referred it to the planning board. Our board has really not had a chance to talk very much about all the variances that are required, but the ZBA will continue reviewing the variance application from what I understand at their February 18th meeting. So, please, if the applicant could describe the area and sign variances, not in full detail. I know they're listed in quite a bit of detail in the application, but just kind of give us the gist of it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, there's really kind of two sets of variances here, one that I'll refer to as the drive-through variances, and then the other that I'll refer to as the sign variances. There is listed a total number of nine, but realistically, it's more like six total variances. There are some, especially the variances with respect to the drive-through that are duplicative just by the nature of the code. So, we'll start there with the drive-through. There's front yard setback variances, and they're all off of this ordering canopy here. We talked about the canopies that serve the drive-through. So, that is considered a structure requiring setbacks off of West Merritt Boulevard, which requires a setback both from the center line and from the lot line. So, there's a 125-foot requirement from the center line. We're requesting that down to 51.6 feet, 100 feet off of the lot line, down to 66.2, and that's because the nature of West Merritt Boulevard is private, so although, so really the lot line is farther away than the center line, which is somewhat unique. Again, from the, there is a requirement in the code for setbacks from a drive-through entrance. So, the drive-through entrance is here, and setbacks needed from Route 9, again, two, one from the lot line, one from the center line. We're requesting nine feet down from the required 100 for the lot line, and then from the center line, it's 125, and we're only requesting about three and a half feet of relief down to 121 and change. The last drive-through variance is the impervious coverage variance in this zone. 70% is permitted. We have, we're proposing 79%, but this is an already developed site that's already over that impervious capacity up to 77, so it's really is only a 2% increase over current. So, these variances, the reason why they're needed is the uniqueness of this site, standing in the corner of this lot, and also really to increase the safety of pedestrians and patrons and then also the team members of Chick-fil-A. So, it's the corner lot, and so in order to provide the stacking that we believe is necessary based upon all of the Chick-fil-A's that have been built across the country, that drive-through really does need to wrap around the building. So, it does need to be, the drive-through with its components of the canopy and the entrance do need to be within the setbacks. Again, although there is a setback needed off of Route 9, the real reason for that setback is that you wouldn't want stacking to go into Route 9. Well, there's no access to this property from Route 9, so there's no chance that anybody, that there's going to be enough stacking to get from that drive-through entrance to affect any traffic on Route 9. So, the necessity of, the reason, the purpose for that variance is not needed in this case. Also, there's no direct access from West Merritt Boulevard. You need to come through the new, what will be the new access road and then on to this, through the rest of the Hudson Town Plaza to get onto the site. Finally, the safety of the patrons, again, we don't want anybody crossing, we don't want any pedestrians crossing, people walking to this site, crossing any portions of the drive-through. So, that's why it's put on the perimeter of the site to avoid having that happen. And then finally, the setbacks that we're requesting are comparable to the setbacks that are in place at the Dunkin' Donuts within this plaza. It's just to the, excuse me, to the west of this. They have the same type or similar setbacks for their drive-through canopy off of their access roads as well. And they also have the same or similar setbacks for their drive-through entrance off of West Merritt Boulevard. So, going to the sign variances, again, there's a total of four, but it's really, it's really more like three or honestly even two. There's an aggregate wall sign requirement of 40 square feet, or excuse me, and we're requesting an increase to 211. There's permitted one monument sign per development. We're requesting an additional monument sign. There's permitted one primary sign, and we're requesting five. And there's no permitted freestanding signs, and we're requesting a separate freestanding sign. And all of this really derives from the probably misclassification of at least this portion of the lot as a retail center. So, anytime there is a shopping center that has three or more tenants, it's deemed to be a retail center, and the amount of signage drops drastically, because you think of these retail centers, that's a mall, that's a strip mall, where you have one point of entrance to the property. You have one, you know, usually one facade for each tenant. That's not the case here. This is a standalone building, you know, on a corner of the lot. So, in order to provide safe access to the property for anybody coming, wanting to go there, you want to have signs directing people to the site. So, one sign really just doesn't fit in this area, and that's supported by another facility in this same site, that being the Chipotle and the Five Guys property that is down on the southern end of the site. They, that property is, so it's two tenants in one building. Each of the tenants has three wall signs. Each of the tenants has three wall signs, and they are located about 75 feet from the one monument sign that's already in, in this plaza. So each of those tenants gets the benefit of a wall sign on three out of the four sides of the building, and a monument sign right next to their, their, their property. Here, we're about, I think, 1,200 feet from that same monument sign, so really no monumental direction to this location. And then, again, we would, we would like to have similar amount of signage on, on all of the walls to bring people to the site and bring them to the site safely.
Okay. So I'll mention that the variance application was referred by the zoning board of appeals to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development under GML 239, and they did respond in a letter dated February 11th with a denial, which is unusual for the county. And so we, we did get a copy of that. And the county's recommendation includes suggestions for reducing the number and size of certain of the proposed signs. I assume you did get a copy of that letter?
Yes, we did. Yes.
And the county indicates that that would reduce the sign variances needed from the ZBA. So in, in the county's determination of denial, they recommend that the ZBA not grant specific variances that were listed. So they, they refer to it as variance number five, which I guess is from your list, for wall sign area, and variance number seven for number of primary signs. And they do have specific recommendations for eliminating certain signs. So I won't go into the details because we can all read the letter.
Sure.
But they kind of close by indicating that these adjustments would substantially reduce the sign variances needed. And I think the, the county is right in pointing out that the ZBA should be looking at the minimal variances necessary to enable this proposal to go through. Well, I actually personally agree on 100% with the county's recommendations that the number and size of proposed signs is excessive, and that the applicant should follow the recommendations for reducing the size and area of signs as stated in the county's letter. So I wanted to get some feedback from the board on this, and then, of course, we'll let you respond to it, but I'm sure you'll have to, this will be good practice for you because you will have to do it again at the zoning board meeting coming up next week.
Appreciate it.
But anyway, what do board members think about the signs and the variances being requested and the county's letter? And we, I would like to be able to respond, at least in, in short form, to the zoning board of appeals in time for their meeting so that they have
That would be great. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So we really should talk through this and figure out how we're going to respond. So any input would be appreciated. Don't all speak at once.
Quite honestly, Chair, I did not consider it for this meeting, so. I did not really study it to see exactly where everything was and where, you know.
Right. Anybody? Jody, do you have any, any thoughts on the signs?
I don't know. I have too objective to some of the variance for the signs. I mean, that's just me, but especially since they are pointing out stuff with, you know, the other tenant in the lot, inside the lot, meaning Chipotle and Five Guys.
I think those were subject to some variances. I'm not quite sure what the details were, but I know when we reviewed that proposal, we, we also commented that there were numerous sign variances being requested, and not, not too happy with that.
Have you gotten a lot of pushback from other things on the, and signs and the variances? Okay.
Yeah, and I would suggest the board consider each sign individually. Each, each sign has a purpose, not just up here trying to say, hey, let's get as much as we can, right? Each side has a purpose. We can talk through each individual sign if you'd like, or if there's one that you're saying, I don't see the purpose of this sign, let's talk about that. Again, it's a unique site. We need visibility on all sides of the building because folks are coming to this restaurant from all sides.
Right.
Is the signage plan, I'm looking at the plant, site development plan, signage plan wasn't even one of the
The ZBA application, Anthony.
Yeah, there's a whole sign package.
There is a sign package, and if you'd like, we can kind of scroll through this, the sign package on the screen here.
You want us, would you like us to walk you through it, hook up?
Yeah, briefly, yep.
Sure. A1, A2, A3, those are all channel wall signs on the north, east, and west sides. There's also a wall logo sign on the south frontage, and then a monument sign located right at the corner of the site. So again, the monument sign is going to be needed for anybody coming south on Route 9 to direct them onto West Merritt Boulevard before they go past the site. Otherwise, they're going to go past the site, and then go, and they go, oh, it's Chick-fil-A. They're going to have to go all the way down to the southern entrance and come back and go all the way through the entire Hudson Town Plaza. So that's a really important sign, just for, just for anybody coming south on Route 9. It also, it also helps anybody coming across, I don't, I think it might be East Merritt Boulevard across the street
Yeah.
Coming into that intersection at Route 9. It's an, it's an important sign to, to get anybody coming from the Route 9 area onto the site. Then again, you know, we're in a shopping plaza, so we need internal signs to provide wayfinding onto this, to this site from within the larger site. And then as well, we need anybody who's coming down West Merritt Boulevard, you have a, you have other developments to the north, you have the residential development to the west, so there is a high amount of traffic that comes through on West Merritt Boulevard. We've talked about that with traffic. So we want to make sure that people are directed to the site. So that's what's the purpose of A3 coming onto the site, as well as A2 for the same purpose. The WS, the wall sign, is anybody coming in who is already on site from the south bringing them directly to Chick-fil-A.
Scroll down, you can see the elevations. Next page. So here's the front of the store. You can see the Chick-fil-A script text over in the main entry doors. I think everybody understands the, the purpose of a, of a sign over your main entry. Folks walking into the store and know where to go. The second sign, and it's hard to see, go back on this elevation, it's being considered a sign, is, you can kind of see a red arrow to the middle of the wall right there. That, that's a sign that says welcome friends and neighbors in like a metal cutout, and then at the bottom of it, it'll say fish kill. So that's how they name their stores. This is Chick-fil-A, fish kill. It provides a sense of community and welcomeness that they like to include, and it has fish kill right on the elevation. That is technically considered a sign. That's included in the variances, but as you can see, it's not branding for Chick-fil-A. It's just something they, they've rolled out across all of their stores. The next elevation, this is the side facing north, facing the, the private road. Again, just a script, simple Chick-fil-A script text on that elevation. This is the drive-through window side, plant south, facing the Chipotle development over there. That's the logo. This is the only logo sign. Again, Chick-fil-A is generally new to the market. A lot of people know Chick-fil-A. I get it, but, but some folks don't, so that's why we use the script on three sides and the logo on one, just to promote the branding and identification of their logo here. Now, the backside facing the Dunkin' Donuts is the script.
Why is that needed?
This is facing the residential apartment.
Yeah, but everybody who's there, who's a residential apartment, is going to know it. What it is.
Agree.
I mean, I
Sure, but
If they don't, they must be just first time there.
Yeah, I, I understand, but if you're going to the, the shopping center or, or leaving, you know, quick serve restaurants are passed by trip generators. It's out of convenience. A lot of folks don't stop at these restaurants until they see it and say, okay, yeah, I'm hungry, I'm going to stop in real quick. So this would target the identification of Chick-fil-A's up and coming, rather than, as John mentioned, you pass by, then you see the sign, you may make a U-turn somewhere else to go back.
It just, it looks like you've got one on every side of the building.
Well, that's what's proposed, is one on each side.
Yes, yeah.
That's the, that's the, yeah.
I, I don't know, I'm
Attracting folks from each direction, given the location.
I'm not involved in the review, but it seems, I don't know.
And, and like I was saying before, that's not
Like, your main frontages I could see. I think the one that Fred was talking about that's near a residential development, they're going to know it's there. They, they live there, they drive by it all the time.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's not exactly near the residential zone, but it's facing it, and it's
Well, yeah, and they're driving by, right?
Coming from that direction.
And I don't know if it's, there's a size thing or not.
And, and as they approach that entrance, they're going to be able to see it anyway on the, the one facing north, because you have the one facing north, and that's the way they're going to be driving by.
That's right. When you get close enough, you'll see the one on that
You'll be able to see it, and if they want to do it, they're going to do it, you know, but I'm, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, we're just pulling up this plan so it can better depict where you're approaching from. So if you're approaching from the west, that's where you're going to see the one on the west side of the building. To your point, everybody's local, you've driven past Chick-fil-A, you know it's there.
You don't know it's there. Like, they don't, you know, we don't have a sign on the, on that side for, you know, the warehouse or anything else.
Yep. I, I understand. The thought I would have there is just if, if folks drive past, then see the sign, they might be turning around to go to the plaza.
Good for them.
So I, I prefer that we don't get into a detailed discussion on each and every sign because that's going to happen at the zoning board
Yeah.
meeting next week. And I'd like to be able to get fairly quickly to a point where if we're going to respond to the ZBA's referral, that we, we do that. If we can't come to a consensus on that, then we won't. But at least we've been given the opportunity, and this is, this is the time.
I just, Chairman, I would just like to show these photos to the rest, to you and the rest of the board.
Go ahead.
So these are, these are the Chipotle and the Five Guys. So you can see they each have three signs total, plus the neighboring monument sign.
I think it's too many.
I understand that you might think it's too many, but the zoning board has already authorized it in this same location.
I know that.
That's their call, I guess, in this case.
And that's what will happen if we do send the comment back to them. It's the zoning board's authority and responsibility to make those decisions. But since we're the lead agency and we're doing the project review, the least we can do is if we think there are too many signs to say that to the zoning board and see what they do.
I agree. I think the monument sign makes sense, right? I mean, but the, the ones that are on the building, there, there's too many of them. The one that Fred mentioned is definitely way unnecessary. And I think the others are, are way too large.
Yeah, so here, here are the, the county's specific recommendations. First, that sign A2 could be removed. That's the one we were talking about on that north facade. And it's somewhat redundant with sign A1, which is the one facing east toward Route 9. And also, they do indicate the monument sign will be visible from Route 9. So I don't think the county was, had a problem with the, the extra monument sign. They also say then sign A1 could be moved slightly north if needed, just to give a little bit better visibility from the, the Route 9 entrance into the site. And then either sign A3 or the wall sign logo, logo could be removed, and the remaining sign moved to the southwest corner of the building or replaced with a projecting sign, which I think are reasonable suggestions. So it's, it's kind of, let's say, a compromise in terms of still getting the kind of visibility that I think you're looking for, but just not as many and not as big signs. And then they, they do talk about the proposed wall sign areas could be reduced in size, being significantly larger than allowed for code, and still getting the total wall sign area closer to the 80 square feet requirement.
I mean, the Chick-fil-A sign does seem larger than, you know, I know there's three different Five Guys, three different Chipotle signs, but this one in the script definitely seems larger than any of those three.
Yeah.
I mean, I think two of the, two of the signs on the building might be, you know, if they're strategically placed, would make sense with the, with the monument sign, which is going to get the attention from motorists. So that would be my opinion on this, if we're going to make a recommendation to the zoning board.
I understand what you're saying, Anthony, with the size, but this place is probably going to be substantially larger, I'm imagining, because I don't think the Five Guys fits 90 people, correct?
It's a bigger store.
It's definitely bigger.
It's a much bigger store, and, I mean, honestly, for me, what difference does it make if they have a sign on every wall?
But you also, the
Their location of where they are
The Five Guys is also combined with the Chipotle, not combined in their spaces, but in the building.
Right.
So, you know, the total amount of parking spaces and the size of the, the two restaurants together are probably at least as large, maybe larger than this one.
Comparable.
Combined, certainly comparable.
And this is a, I'm sorry, this is two, two-scale drawing. So they, they try to prorate it to where it fits in the general aesthetics of the building in a, in a nice manner.
I mean, I think the location of where they are, I don't see the problem with having a, a sign on every wall. I, I don't.
BJ, you want to weigh in on this?
I agree with Jody on that point. At the same time, zoning board of CBA has already made a mistake granting somebody now either live with the mistake or correct all the, all the things, right? So I don't understand the reason why these guys cannot be given the same, apply the same rules here, right? So that's my, my comment on it.
All right, well, let me just, well, first, let me ask, Anas, do you have any thoughts about this, on, and particularly on the signs? The county really had no problem with the setback variances, but I don't know if you've had experience with similar fast food restaurants and other, other areas, or specifically Chick-fil-A's?
Um, I just, you know, obviously, I don't have a say in the game, but, I mean, as, as far as the signs, I think that definitely the, you know, the ones that are facing the road would be deemed appropriate. I think the other ones, I mean, these signs, I think, especially the script signs or smaller signs, are typical, you know, illuminated sign. So I mean, I think that, you know, either way, the ones on the, on the back wouldn't be that big of a, of an issue. But again, it's up to the board. My personal feeling, I think that the Five Guys and the Chipotle, if you didn't know that they were there, you'd probably drive past them, even though they do have signage. I mean, that, if, if I wasn't from the area, I, I don't think that you would actually know where those are, even with the signage, especially, you know, with, with the location where it is. I think that having appropriate signage and directions to get where you need to go would be important for the sign, for the site. Because it isn't a jerk in, you know, in and out. You'd have to come into the site off, you're coming off a nine, going onto West Edge, onto, you know, it's, it's, takes a little hit to the site. That's my opinion. Take it for what it is.
Okay, thank you. Well, here's, let me just read what I thought might be a proposed motion, and if we don't get a move and a second to it, so be it, and we just won't say anything. But what I would suggest is a motion to authorize the chair to send a short statement to the ZBA indicating that the planning board But what I would suggest is, um, a motion to authorize the chair to send a short statement to the ZBA indicating that the planning board is in agreement with the county's recommendation in their referral response letter dated February 11th, that the ZBA not grant variance number five for a wall sign area or variance number seven for a number of primary signs, and that the applicant follow the county's suggestions for eliminating certain size, signs and reducing the size of wall signs, thereby substantially reducing the sign variances needed. If somebody would like to move it, we can see where that goes.
I mean, I'd like to see it reduced, I'd like to see it mitigated. I, I don't know if they would be able to actually meet the, the code requirement, but I, I definitely agree with the statement that we need to, you know, to recommend to the ZBA that at least a reduction or some form of mitigation toward reducing the extent of the variance required is needed. I'd be willing to go that far.
All right, do you wanna make that into a motion, sort of repeat that?
That would be helpful for both of us.
Yeah, because I didn't really quite get it.
I don't know how to do that right now.
You wanna take a couple of minutes? You know, the, the thing is, again, it, it is not up to us and, you know, if we can't come to a consensus, which I don't think we are, um, we can't really, you know, the, what's gonna have to happen at the ZBA upcoming meetings, and let's see, I guess they didn't schedule a public hearing on it yet.
No, the first review is at the next meeting.
Yeah, so, um, with a denial by the county, there's gonna have to be some intense discussion there. And there likely, in my opinion, could be some, um, compromises and discussion about sort of, as Anthony was suggesting, that may not quite meet the county's requirement for denial, um, or overcoming a denial. But, um, you know, the denial is not something to take lightly. Um, requires a majority plus one vote of the zoning board and, um, you know, possibly the only way you might get there is through compromising and, um, the county still may not be satisfied, so.
I, I guess the motion would be, we send a letter to the ZBA recommending that the board not grant variance five or seven without the applicant providing some form of mitigation. I don't know if that, that captures what I'm trying to say.
Without providing some.
What about reducing the requested relief with respect to five and seven?
Five was, they're looking for 211 square feet of wall signage and 40 is the maximum allowed. I'm saying that the, um, planning, Dutchess County Planning is saying just flat out reject that variance. I'm saying, my recommendation is to the ZBA is to ask the applicant to mitigate.
Yeah, because we're, we're never gonna get to 40 square feet.
We did the same thing with Dutchess Community.
And, and again, that's, that 40, remember, you gotta remember that, that 40 square foot requirement is a requirement for a retail center where you get one sign. So that's, that 211 feet not only counts every wall sign that we've proposed, it also counts the monument sign. If this was a standalone structure within the same zone and it wasn't part of a retail center, they would get two signs on the wall of, of 40 feet each, um, plus a monument sign. So, you know, to say, I, I take, I take issue with the county saying just flat out deny that. I think in their comments, they kinda walked back from it, but really, you, you're never gonna get to 40 square feet of sign on this. That's, that's an inappropriately low amount of signage. It would, it would be unsafe to only authorize up to that limit. And I think the planning board, or I think the zoning board would feel the same way. So I, 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 I feel the recommendation should track with a.
Good luck with that. Yeah, I mean, the county specifically acknowledges, um, that, uh, let's see, where was that? I just had it, um, agree with the applicant that the code regulations for retail centers may not best address signage for a standalone building. However, the amount of signage proposed is significantly more than allowed for a standalone establishment and not all the proposed signage appears necessary. Well, that's, that's basically the argument you're gonna have to have with the zoning board. And so I'd rather not even get into a specific recommendation if we're not gonna go as strong as saying, um, follow the county's letter or figure it out at the zoning board meeting, um, because it's just not something I wanna do all night. Um, we're not gonna agree on it, so.
Do you wanna rely on your own?
Rely on the county's, um, letter and your own criteria for evaluating variances.
I just wouldn't want, I don't wanna see the ZBA grant the variances as they currently are presented. I'd like, I think there's at least one sign on that wall that, that should, that is not needed. So that's why I, that's why I would recommend that this board at least recommend strongly that, you know, they mitigate. And if you wanna say in the form of removing at least one of the wall signs, I'd be, I'd be okay with saying that if we wanna get a little more specific. But I don't know, that makes a lot of sense. I think saying they need to mitigate is the way to put it.
What do, what do board members think about that? Couple of you have implied, from what I heard, that you're in favor of supporting the, the, um, the variances and the signs as proposed.
Well, I'm not, but it's, I'm sorry, so it's, I mean, limiting.
In other words, what I'm saying is it's now nine o'clock and I don't wanna talk about this for very much longer.
Yeah, we've got some reviews left.
So what's it gonna be, guys, all or nothing, or specifically something in between?
Putting signs wherever they want, that's my opinion. I don't find them offensive, I don't see what the problem is. They're trying to get customers, and that's my opinion.
So here's my suggestion, that we punt and.
Let them rely on their own facts?
Basically, but not even say anything. Basically just say, you know, you can watch the planning board's, um, video of the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could, could we get a recommendation on setback variances and staying in UConn signage?
Sorry?
What about this, this, the drive-through variances? Cause we, could we, cause the county effectively punted on those, so we.
The county basically said those were a matter for local determination.
Right.
So that was not included in their denial, so I don't think we need to say anything about that. So, I don't feel that we, excuse me, I don't feel we should say anything about those if we're not gonna say anything about the signs, period. Let's move on. That's my suggestion. All right, there are a couple of other things we could do here, um, if we so choose. Okay, one thing we never got was a, um, were any comments from CPL's traffic engineer on the traffic impact assessment. Um, I know, I had talked to Liz about that and, um, you thought you, that we might get some comments from David Hastings. Um, but we haven't seen anything, and I know that the planning board had asked for such a while back. So what I'm suggesting is that, um, and this would be a question for Dennis. Is it possible at this point of the review to ask for MJ's traffic engineer to take a look at the traffic impact assessment?
Uh, we can.
And.
Um, I think that we're at, you know, it's still early enough in the project where we could take a look at it.
So, um, if that's okay, I'd like to actually make that into a motion. Um, this would be requesting that MJ's traffic engineer review the applicant's traffic impact assessment dated July 19th, 2024, and the site plan set, and report back to the board with comments regarding traffic, access, circulation, or parking for the March 13th meeting. Do you think that timeframe would be realistic?
Uh, I believe so.
All right, is there a motion to that effect? That was Vijay. Is there a second? My second's it? Any further discussion?
Just wanted to look at for Christmas time.
No, for, before, um, by the end of the winter break.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I know what that traffic's like for that Walmart Christmas time.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, you can't find parking, they're gonna be using your parking spot for that.
Just for clarification, I, I know we already had to replenish the escrow account. Is the applicant, is the applicant gonna be paying for two traffic reviews or CPL is no longer?
No, I'll, I'll let David Hastings, yeah, not, I mean.
Yeah, he will not be submitting an invoice on that.
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
Um, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so that carries. Okay, the next question, and this, I think we can do. Should the board schedule a public hearing on the Chick-fil-A proposal for the March 13th meeting? Um, that would, if we do it, that would be at 7:00 PM or as soon as possible thereafter. Um, but what does the board think? And then I'll, I'll go to Dominic and Dennis. Is this an appropriate time to start, um, setting up a public hearing, even though there is still, you know, some things left to go? We've gone pretty far through the review, um, and there are some details left. But as we always say, we can open a public hearing and keep it open if we think we still need further information.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts in connection with that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, I completely agree with what you're saying, and obviously the option is to keep the public hearing open. The hesitancy that I would have, uh, and, and might result in that outcome is, is that if, if the variances aren't granted, then the changes to the plans may happen. And so there may be substantive changes that need to be considered, uh, as part of that, although if the variances, you know, don't happen, then the project would presumably become smaller at that time. Uh, if, if that's even feasible, I'm not sure, if we'd have to wait and see. But on the other hand, the board is also conducting lead agency for a coordinated review on the project, and so actually the zoning board of appeals can't, uh, actually make a final determination in connection with the variances until this board completes its process. So in all fairness to the applicant, uh, it would seem prudent to, if, if the plans are in sufficient form for the public to be able to review them, to get that public input now.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, that's, that's a very good point.
Every, every once in a while, right?
No.
A broken clock is, is right, once a day.
Quite often.
Maybe even twice a day, depending on the clock.
The, the zoning board could act if you made a negative declaration, you don't need to make a final determination on site plan.
Correct, correct, that's correct. It's a coordinated review, they would have to wait until this board makes its secret determination and if it's a negative declaration, that would close out that process.
And, you know, if we should hold the public hearing and, um, end up with a negative determination during the process before the zoning board acts, I mean, well, or let's say, um, just prior to the zoning board acting, because we'd probably, you know, what I anticipate is we probably would keep the public hearing open just as a, as a normal way of doing it, um, until it looks like the zoning board is about ready to act. So it would, it could kind of coordinate the timing.
They run in parallel to a large extent.
But if for some reason the ZBA does not grant all the variances requested, um, before we get to actually approving, um, the, the site plan itself, um, you could always, in effect, have modifications or amendments to the site plan.
I, I would think that a project of this scope would, would warrant a consideration for both preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval if it comes to that. But, you know, since there are SAD approvals that are involved, including changes that might occur to the plans, you know, between that time, so.
Right, and we can always gauge by how many people are showing up at the public hearing or hearings that we hold, what the likelihood of, you know, signs being the killer for the public, um, would actually be the case.
Fair enough.
To put it bluntly.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you think, Dennis?
Um, based on our comments, I think they're, they're very technical in nature, they're not gonna change anything that's, um, on the site plan, so I, I don't feel that there'd be any reason why we couldn't schedule a public hearing.
So what does the board think about that?
All for it.
All right, so, um, is there a motion to, for the board to schedule a public hearing on the Chick-fil-A proposal for the March 13th, 2025 meeting at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible? Um, would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Moved by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vijay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you open a point?
Any opposed, any abstentions? That carries six to zero, and we'll need public hearing signs, this may take about an hour to discuss.
Please. Please, please.
Probably at least two signs, one, I would think at the intersection of West Merritt and Route 9, probably at the southwest corner, which is actually the, you know, the property of the, the proposed site plan. And perhaps one at the intersection of what I would call West Merritt and the mall entrance road, the current, um, existing mall entrance road.
Yes.
Opposite the mobile gas station.
Agreed.
At the southwest corner of that intersection. Anyone think of any other spots for more signs?
Yeah, that's the best reviews for all of it.
Okay.
That's where the project is.
I was gonna, as an option, suggest even possibly authorizing MJ to prepare a draft EAF parts two and three, but I think having had the discussion about we're likely to keep the public hearing open and, and probably wait at least to coordinate timing with the zoning board and their variances, it's gonna be a couple more meetings, I think, where we would have time to. And, and also I think it really wouldn't be fair if we're waiting to get comments from the traffic engineer. That could have some aspects related to the seeker determination, so why don't we wait on the authorizing the seeker paperwork?
Would just mention that would hold up the ZBA from making any determinations.
Well, for one meeting, um, we can, at the next, at the March meeting, at the March 13th meeting, we can open the public hearing, see what kind or if any comments we get from the public, and then, um, at the March 13th meeting authorize the preparation of the secret documents for the April meeting, which I think likely would, our, our meeting comes before the planning, before the ZBA meeting in April, so it would probably allow the sequencing to work out that way.
Okay. Yeah, that works, because we are expecting, we're gonna need a public hearing for the ZBA as well.
Yeah.
Those would probably be both in March then.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll hold that until the March meeting. Okay, I think that should do it, unless you have, unless you have any other questions or comments?
No, thank you all very much for your time tonight.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks. Let's see, just give me a second here to organize things. I don't wanna take an actual break unless people feel we need one, but I, I prefer just taking a second here and. Can get up and stretch if you want.
I just realized.
Before you start.
Do we get to stretch too?
Did you drop the other project?
It's still in regulatory. No.
Okay. I'm ready, here we go. All right, the next application is Fishkill Medical Park, site development plan, special use permit, and subdivision, forward to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on January 29th, 2025, to consider declaring lead agency and to consider scheduling a public hearing for the March 13th, 2025 planning board meeting. Welcome back, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
Um, again, Jeff Kane, representing the applicant, Kirchhoff Acquisitions, joined by Becky Volk as our project attorney. Uh, so our, our site plan for the, for the medical park here, um, uh, we have continued to add more detail to the plans, both as we've developed some of the utilities and in response to comments from the, from the consulting planner and engineer. I think probably the, kind of the major thing that changed since the last time we were here is we've kind of reworked the entrance and exit lanes here. Uh, the last time we here, they were spread further apart. We just tightened them up just to make it, make the approach at, at Snook Road, just a little more direct, a little, a little easier to, to navigate there. Um, there was some concern because of, we had some concern internally, those two lanes were far apart that somebody might go up the wrong lane, so it was, made them closer together, just we thought, made that, made that a lot, a lot safer. We've, again, in response to some of the comments and some of the, the code issues, we've modified the lighting, addressed all the hotspots. Uh, we responded to, uh, to, uh, OPR, Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. They asked for, you know, a list of all the involved agencies. They asked for a viewshed analysis. They asked for a summary of the cultural resources studies done in the area. So we summarized some 50 different studies that were, have been done, um, both on the property, you know, Commonwealth Commons, Duchess Mall Site, 84, uh, summarized all those, and provided that in a document to, to the state. Uh, we'll, you know, if you go through that city, you'll, you'll see what, what I saw, and that's, um, there's nothing on this property, right? So the, uh, they, they found a couple of things up next to, uh, to, to 84. They think they were probably 20th century things, probably thrown out of a car. Um, a couple of things along, uh, um, along, along Snook Road, but there didn't, really nothing of, of significance was, has been found, um, in the studies on the site there. Uh, and we've continued our work with, uh, with, uh, Department of Health on water and sewer connections. Uh, we'll remark that, yes, it's, it's, it's crowded in the Route 9 lanes, uh, getting the, getting the sewer forced main to work there. So we're working with the Health Department on how best to, to accomplish those designs. But really, again, where I think we've, we've, we've progressed pretty well on the, on addressing the comments that we've received, and looking forward to, and again, more, uh, questions, comments from, from this board and the, and the consultants.
Thanks. All right, why don't we go right to CPL's memo dated February 6th?
All right, I, I'll try to be quick, because a lot of progress was made in, in the last submiddle. And really, you know, the long story short is that, um, we're kind of, in a way, held up a little bit by SHPO, um, at this point. But let me just walk through some quick specifics. At the beginning of my memo, I just kind of, um, on top of page two, I kind of reiterate the support for, um, the idea of the sidewalk fund, um, in lieu of creating sidewalks right along the, um, along the frontage, uh, I guess that would be west of the site. So that's just reiterated, so that the reasoning is right there. And then bottom of page two, I, I kind of tried to walk the planning board through, um, some pretty major detailed, um, historical, um, studies that were presented. It was a long list of, um, studies that had been done before. And then, uh, top of page three, I reiterate that, um, we had, um, asked that, uh, a response from SHPO be provided. Let's see. And I know that, uh, more materials have been submitted to SHPO, I believe. And then I kind of walked the board through the latest SHPO comments, which are in the middle of page three. And by SHPO, I'm sorry, I should have said this. New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation is also referred to as the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, or SHPO, for the record. And so the response from OPRHP is, um, that it's an archaeologically sensitive area, and to verify and confirm all involved state and federal agencies, I'm paraphrasing. And their sort of second comment is unclear from the submitted site plan, how the proposed work will visually impact the historic resource to determine whether or not the scale, massing, and location are compatible. And there is a viewshed analysis. So I'm walking you through, for the record, bottom of page three, um, the extensive summary of the nearby studies that were done that had to do with archaeological and historical resources from the early 1960s through 2013. And then also a summary of studies on the project site itself, related to the proposed church known as the Oasis Project, which you may or may not be familiar with. So drawing from all these existing studies that had already been done. And, so then, I walk you through, um, Appendix C, um, which I kind of encourage the board at least to look at the imagery, read some of the text, and, and kind of draw your own conclusions. And then I wrote you this comment. In my professional opinion, the conclusions on page 62 of this report regarding prehistoric resources, historic resources, and visual impacts are supported by the narrative maps and illustration provided in Appendix C, and appear to be reasonable. That's my opinion. And then, um, all of that material was submitted to New York State OPRHP or SHPO, um, via the Cultural Resource Information Site. And so basically, it's a matter of waiting for the conclusions that will come from them. Eventually, I hope sooner rather than later. And then the planning board should be guided, guided in their review of this aspect of the project by the response from SHPO. So hopefully, they will look at the visual analysis that was done, which is very similar to the one done for the Oasis Project. And from what I see, I don't, I don't see a visual impact from this project that would have necessarily anything to do with general visual or the historic nature of these sites. So, so far, the planning board at its January 9th meeting classified the proposed action as unlisted. And the central issue, as I've said, is that response from the State Historic Preservation Office. And so once we have that, um, I would recommend that the board authorize preparation of a draft environmental assessment form, parts two and three, for consideration, um, at the March meeting, if we get this, uh, response from SHPO in time. And also authorize preparation of a draft seeker determination of nonsignificance, again, pending whatever the SHPO response is. And then site development plan code comments. I had some minor comments, um, that I'm referring to Duchess County's comments about lighting, trying to maybe hone those down a little tiny bit more. Let's see. And then I'm tying the sidewalk fund into the special use permit conditions, which you'll need to address eventually. A wetland permit approval will be required, but that is for .13 acres of disturbance, so they have substantially, um, avoided that. And then, on page six, I'm kind of putting the question of loading to the planning board, because we've talked about it back and forth. Technically, loading is required on the site. In our discussions and offline consultation, I've kind of outlined this for you at the top of page six. Let's see. I have some safety and convenience concerns about deliveries happening during the patient loading slash unloading areas, and, um, that was what was recommended, is to use, um, where you could drive up under, um, it's like a little overhang, where people can be dropped off, and the idea is that deliveries would occur at the same place. So that's one concern. Um, a waiver could be requested of, of loading. And so then I walk you through, if they request a waiver, I'm kind of saying to you, I think they would need, two spaces, and the waiver, the waiver provisions in your code, um, allow 50% of the number required, so that would get you down to one loading space, and then they would have to delineate an area. And it would be one space, 15 feet wide and 40 feet long. So we've kind of gone back and forth discussing the issue of loading. And I just wanted to see if the planning board has any opinion, one way or another. The idea here is that it's a box truck. I don't know what the dimensions are.
Yeah, so I would think, well, a couple of things on this. One is that, you know, the, the code does specifically outline loading for very specific uses. It, and, and requirements for those uses. It doesn't have a requirement for medical uses. And.
It just has the office.
It does have offices. It's, again, but, but doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't have medical offices. So you could make the assumption, well, they just forgot medical offices and meant to, meant to, and, and, medical offices meant to include in offices, or you could make the assumption that, recognizing that medical offices don't typically get big semis rolling in with, with supplies. It's just not how it works. They get smaller box trucks. And, and so our experience with, with medical is that, um, those vehicles will pull up in front, they'll pull up in the side, they'll do what the Amazon driver does, and, 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 and park and offload and, and move on. And, um, there's no, the, the site plan doesn't necessarily need designated loading space for it to work efficiently for those people coming in and out of there. That's how, that's how we approach these, and we think they, that it's been successful. But again, that's just kind of the background for why, um, we didn't think one was required. Um, should you decide otherwise, and, and, and we would certainly then ask for a waiver to whatever minimum is, and we'll figure out how to, how to best show it. But, but the reality is, they, you know, it's, it's, how does the site work? And that works with the drivers pulling up, or where it's, where it's, um, where there's a door.
Go ahead, Liz.
The only space that I thought might have been out of the way of patients, and maybe sort of out of the way of people parking, is, I don't know, can you blow this up at all?
You're, you're talking about over and, over and.
Yeah, in between, in between, uh, the buildings, there is one area where it's, you know, people are gonna park close to the building if they can. So my feeling is that that lane, that's right smack dab in the middle, no, go one over, sorry, right there. People are not likely to park in those spaces, because they're farthest from either entryway. So I thought, if there could be a loading space there, at least it's there, it's available if needed, and then it theoretically wouldn't interfere with the actual, you know, places where people are pulling up and letting people out of their cars. So that was my thinking on that, and that, you know, that would involve a waiver and.
When they will be delivering, right, the guy's gonna have a hand truck or a cart or something?
Yeah.
So instead of being in the parking spaces, if you go all the way to the back of the property, keep going up that, you know, keep going that way, right back there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a place where the truck, park?
Trucks can, but the, the problem with the Amazon drivers, they can't read evidently. I hope I'm not insulting anybody here, but, but, no, but, but seriously, they, they, um, they're, they're hourly employees. They, they park, you can put signs up all over the place, because we've, we've done this. And, and they park where it is most convenient to them, and it's not about, um, it's the, the signage.
So you're talking deliveries that are not like something that's part of the medical group, so they're sending their own box truck. You're talking now you're gonna be getting Amazon making deliveries?
It, it's, it's, it's all of the above, right? That's, because the, what, the stuff comes in small batches, so it's, uh, it's, it's not that a medical group has a warehouse and is bringing stuff in. Stuff comes in from suppliers, whether it's a pharmaceutical supplier, or it's, it's some, um, paper, or, um, you know, or I don't mean paper, but I mean, but, 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 but medical supplies, you know, those, those come in small batches, and they come in smaller trucks, and they get, right, so the, the truck parks, uh, close to the, to the door. They take the hand truck, they take the two, three, four, six boxes and, and load them into the, into the space. It's just, just how it works. And, uh, that's, uh, um, uh, you know, we.
I've seen, like, a lot of properties where they'll say, deliveries have to go to a certain area, come in through a certain doorway.
And, and we can, and we can, and we can put those signs up, but believe me, we, we, we would. I'm not, I'm not, yeah, but I just, from, from a practical perspective, people ignore those signs, and it's, uh, right, it's just, it just what happens, um, on these. And I'm just, I'm just trying to be, you know, right, right, forthright with how we see it going, so there's, it's, it's clear here.
So from, Liz, from a practical, from a technical, not practical, from a technical code perspective, the planning board can waive up to 50% of the loading requirement, which would still leave one loading space required, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I mean, this is all based on me. I'm setting forth my reasoning.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanna clarify the technical aspect of it, because we can't just waive it all away and say, we, we don't need anything.
Or you could read the code that it doesn't, that it doesn't require.
I'm trying to figure this out. So if the planning board wants to consider waiving loading spaces according to the town code, which we should follow, we can waive up to 50% of the requirement, which would leave the requirement for one loading space. Is, am I reading that correctly?
That's basically what I get from looking at the code. And that's based on me saying that, you know, the uses are kind of general for how many loading spaces each need. So office is one of the categories, and so that's why I, I made, I made the, I wrote the reasoning that medical office would be closest to office, so.
Yeah, well, it is, medical office is a category of office.
Right, that's kind of the way I looked at it, so.
So, short of that, the planning board could waive one of the two required loading spaces, still leaving an application to the ZBA necessary for the second loading space, if it can't be shown on the plan. So that's the question, I think, for the applicant.
We're, we're happy to show a loading space.
Okay, so that took us about 15 minutes to get to that. I think we're good with that understanding. I think, you know, if there can be, well, again, we're talking about two sites, basically, two buildings. Can we interpret, and maybe this is for Dominic to think about, can we interpret that one required loading space remaining if we waive the second to be able to cover for both buildings? Or would each building require its own separate one loading space for?
I, I mean, that seems reasonable, you know, because it's unlikely that they're going to be making deliveries simultaneously at each building. I mean, the code doesn't directly address that, but, I mean, this is one overall, you know, a coordinated site development plan. So I, I would think that that would be a reasonable approach.
I do too.
I think so, and that's why I gave you the square footage of this. So it's one for the first 25,000, and their total gross floor area is less than 50, so.
So, good. I think, uh, unless any planning board members have any different way of looking at it, I think we'd probably be leaning towards waiving one of the two required, um, loading spaces, and then showing the second one somewhere in a convenient location for the two buildings to access.
I think that's reasonable.
What's next?
The remaining comments are all subdivision comments, and they're kind of technical. There's already an, an existing monument on the site. It's just a matter of showing it and labeling, showing and labeling it on the subdivision and site plan. And then reservations and easements regarding shared vehicular access in our discussion. I think there was, uh, wait a minute, hang on a second here. Wait a minute here, reservations. I think that's a matter of providing, um, revisions on the plat. Um, so the response letter talks about no easements are proposed for the subdivision. So the response letter talks about no easements are proposed for the subdivision map. Hang on a second here. Note eight has been added to Sheet T1 of the site planning, indicating both Lot 1 and 2 are granted reciprocal rights over the other lot for pedestrian and vehicle access. And so I make some specific comments, that a declaration of reciprocal easement detailing the rights would be a condition of site plan approval, and that there should be a descriptive note on Plan Sheet T1, and another note on the subdivision plan, and a certified copy of the reciprocal easement detailing these rights should be on file with the Town of Fishkill. And let's see, showing and labeling any easements for drainage easements and for the shared And that's it. The engineering comments would be addressed by MJ, and stormwater comments and traffic comments have been resolved, so. And, you know, the only catch is that, because we don't have the shippo sign up, we can't do the next seeker thing yet, so.
All right. Dennis, why don't you go through MJ's engineering memo?
I'll go through the letter dated February 10th. Some of this listed already covered, but Seeker, it was classified as unlisted action, and the board circulated or initiated a coordinated review. The GML does require a GML because it's proximity to 84 and the village of Fishkill. We note that the subdivision plan should be signed by licensed surveyor. We do know, our comment number seven here, that there was, there are Army Corps Town of Fishkill wetlands on the site. Beginning of the year, DEC came out with new wetland regulations, so I just have the applicant look to make sure that the new regulations don't have any impact on the site. I don't believe they do, because there's already 100-foot buffer on there, but I would just double-check to make sure that there's no additional permit requirements for those new regulations that came out in January. Again, there's some technical comments, utilities have to be, water and sewer would have to be approved by the Board of Health. And then there are some technical comments on the SWIP that we don't need to go into
Mr. Chairman, I would ask if we, you know, following this meeting, if we have the permission to speak with MJ on specific comments, if that can be granted.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments so far from board members?
Did we get truck turning movements for like fire trucks or garbage trucks? The dumpster enclosures are toward the back of the site. Those may be larger vehicles than we did, okay.
Yes, those are included in the site plan set, yes, yes.
It's been a while. And then the other question I had was, Office Building 1 has about 12 accessible parking spaces, and Building 2 has four. Is there a need for Building 2 to have maybe more accessible parking closer to that building?
Again, we don't, we think they're appropriate based on the sizes. Office Building 1 is a two-story building, so it's much larger. Office Building 2 is a single-story building. So we think the number works for each of those. You'll notice for each building, there are a couple of spaces on the backside of the building, which would be much more for staff, and then the front for patients, but that's... We think it's appropriately sized, and it meets the code requirements, meets or exceeds the code requirements.
Yeah, I wasn't really asking more for code, I was just asking for distribution, if that was thought of. It sounds like it has been, so that was all I had.
Remind us what the size of the smaller building is again?
11,310 square feet.
It's only 4,000 smaller than...
The other one's two-story.
No, it's two-story, so the building one is the 15,388 times two.
Oh, times two, okay.
Yeah. It's 4,000 on the ground floor, but then you have another 15 above.
Right. Good, okay.
Did we cover EV parking, too?
I think we asked about it, but I don't remember what the answer was.
Right, so...
Doctors might have EV cars.
Right. The, what we're proposing, you know, the EV charging industry is a little, yeah, up in the, it's a little up in the air, but what we proposed even before kind of what's happened over the last three or four months, is that, you know, the biggest problem with one of these sites is it costs a fortune to go back in and try to retrofit a site. So we have agreed we're going to put in the underground conduit, so should or as demand grows, we'll have the ability to really kind of easily pull some wire through the empty conduit and be able to wire some EV stations. Right now, again, there's not the demand or the money available to make it, to really make it work, but again, as the demand grows, we'll be able to easily meet that demand with that infrastructure in place.
I think I remember that response now.
That sounds like a reasonable approach.
Yeah, really, if you're doing a new site, you got to put that in the ground now, because you'll never do it in the future. It's prohibitive.
And then just following up on scheduling a meeting on the possible donation to a sidewalk fund, any progress on getting the supervisor?
Yeah, I have not heard back from supervisor. I actually thought you were in communication with him on that, and, you know, again, we're ready and willing to...
At the last meeting, I think there was some who's on first, what's on second kind of approach there, and I suggested to you to contact the supervisor's secretary to actually have them coordinate a meeting. I mean, you coordinate the meeting, but having...
I think what happened is I did, I reached out to them, and they then called you, and you and the supervisor and the highway superintendent, I thought had some email communication back and forth, which I wasn't party to, so I've not heard back from the office. I can certainly try again, but again, I thought...
Yeah, I think I reported back to you that it's not going to happen that way, that you really need to...
I will reach out again.
Coordinate and reach out. All right, well, so we do need to do something on the lead agency designation. So the NOI was sent out January 7th, so more than 30 days has elapsed with no objections received from other agencies. So is there a motion declaring that the Town of Fishkill Planning Board serve as lead agency to conduct a coordinator environmental review under Seeker for the proposed Fishkill Medical Park?
Second.
Fred moves it. Anthony seconds. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes.
Thank you.
And then the other thing that we should talk about is whether or not we should go ahead and schedule a public hearing on the several actions for this application for the March 13th meeting. Do we have enough information? And there's still, still is the question of shippo's response, but that's kind of a separate thing, dealing with the Seeker determinations that we'll have to make. But again, as we talked about with one of the previous applications, we can always schedule a public hearing. Seems like there's, we're far enough along with progress of the way the site plan is developing to be able to hold the public hearing, and if necessary, keep it open.
I think that's a good approach.
Okay, what do board members think?
I think that's good, but what's, do you think you're going to be able to hook into the board with the...
Yes.
Because that's a big question.
It's...
I mean, if you don't, then you have to drill a well and put a...
But I think that's the applicant's intention, and I'm assuming you've deliberated on it.
No, we've, yeah, we've come a long ways down that road. We think we, right, we have the ability to do that, so.
I would encourage it, too. I mean, this is in the aquifer, in the aquifer overlay area, so that's my take on that. That's, you know, I've mentioned that in my memo right from the get-go, that hooking into public sewer is a good idea for this site, in my opinion, with the aquifer concerned.
Dennis, any thoughts about setting a public hearing on this one?
No, I think it's appropriate to set a public hearing at this point.
Tom is shaking his head.
Likewise.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to schedule a public hearing on the several actions for the Fishkill Medical Park for the March 13th, 2025 meeting at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible? And again, this will be the second public hearing for the 13th, so it'll be somewhat after 7:00, but that's how we usually advertise it. Is there a motion to that effect?
So won't.
Who said that?
It's VJ.
VJ said that. VJ moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I think one sign would be appropriate for this one.
And where should that go, Anthony?
Right where the driveway is. The existing driveway, the proposed driveway.
I have just one more question. Do you have any idea when shippo is likely to provide a response? Have they given you any indication at all?
I think they've got a 30-day clock. I think that's how it works.
So it could come in?
Yeah, yeah, it would, yeah.
It might be part of the next settlement.
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, I think with seeker documents, we can basically approach that, address it at the March meeting, see if the shippo comments have come in, and then decide whether we should authorize the preparation of the seeker documents for the April meeting.
Okay, good.
All right, does that sound good?
Yep. Good to look down the road.
Two public hearings for next month, yes. All right. Anything else we need to cover?
Yeah, I think just one more, yeah, authorize, yeah.
Oh, yeah, authorize, motion to authorize communication between the applicant and MJ engineering, since MJ is new for us. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
VJ seconded it. All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that carries six to zero. All right, good. Thanks for reminding us about that, Anthony.
Debbie got in there before me, I'll give her the credit.
Okay, thanks, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Thank you all again.
I get some sometimes.
Good going, Debbie.
You beat me.
Okay.
Again, just give it a second. We have finally gotten to that point. Welcome, welcome Jennifer Gray to the post-Super Bowl party.
That's right. No halftime show, though.
So this is the Fishkill Commerce Center Site Development Plan Floodplain Development Permit and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course Water Body Permit. Forward to review preliminary draft of FAF Part 2, and I'll just add that the board did not request an FAF Part 3 at this point, and to discuss and consider making a recommendation of the town board regarding the hiring of a hydrogeologist consultant to be reimbursed by means of an escrow deposit, et cetera, et cetera. The planning board may consider a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss the possible hiring of a consultant. Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
If you have any preliminary comments you'd like to make, but we want to get to Liz to run through the actual EAF Part 2 document.
Yeah, I do want to just make a brief comment. First, to note that we did not submit for this meeting, frankly, because it was our understanding, based on the January meeting, that the Part 2 would be drafted after we made our next submission, so that Part 2 preparation could have the benefit of the additional information that we would be providing in that submission. We did review the preliminary draft, Part 2, that was prepared, and we note that there is some discrepancies between both the information that we've already submitted and also the information that we plan to submit for the March meeting. So I want to just, I'm very happy to hear that the discussion about the hydrogeologist retention is proceeding. I think that's wonderful, but I would respectfully suggest that it might be more efficient use of time to wait and discuss the Part 2 next month after we've made our submission, and after the Part 2 could perhaps be updated and revised to reflect the additional information that we have on the proposed action. I think a lot of what we discussed tonight, if we go through the Part 2, will need to be updated. So I'm just suggesting, just in the interest of everybody's time, I don't want to waste everybody's time, knowing that there's further information coming.
Seriously, thank you.
Thanks, we don't need comments like that. Thanks, Joni. Yeah, I think we're going to need to talk about that, because what actually happened at the January meeting was we went through that discussion, but we ended up with a very clear motion to authorize the preparation of a preliminary, and underlying the word preliminary, draft of the EAF Part 2, knowing that it could be useful as a tool and a checklist for the board to basically gauge where we are at this point from what we've seen so far.
Yeah.
And so I think it will be helpful for the board to actually go through it tonight with the understanding that there is more information to be obtained. We will be presumably hiring a consultant to review the hydrogeologic report, and there will be more to go before we make a determination, so we can clearly do it on that basis, but I do think it will be helpful for the board to go through it. So we do want to do that before talking about the possible hiring of the consultant.
I appreciate that comment, and I guess my next question would be, to what extent and in what procedure will we have an opportunity to kind of weigh in on each of the points as you go through? Will there be an opportunity for that?
Sure. I mean, I think what we usually do is we go through each item, and I don't see why, if you have thoughts about each one as we're going through, again, we don't want to spend all night on that, but we certainly would give you the opportunity to have input and comment as we're going through them.
Sure. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So on that note, Liz, do you want to sort of talk about how you prepare this and run us through part by part?
Okay. So, because I've been reviewing this application for a few months now, I had a pretty good sense of what impacts might be really important. So I started going through the form, kind of making some notes, and then checking the application material. So that's kind of the process that I go through. And then I prepared a draft, and I sent an early draft, and then Jonathan and I had a discussion about it. And... it. And, um, so that's kind of the mechanics of the thing, um, understanding that I knew that there would be another submittal, um, down the line. Um, so anyway, uh, this, this is, this is based on everything that's come before, including discussions at the board meetings and submittals and all that. Um, so I'm going to just jump right in on page one and just let you know how I do this. Um, you'll see a note right on page one that says potent, it's in red, or hopefully it's in red, if you guys got the color version. Right in the middle of the top of the page one says, "Potentially large impacts are denoted below with an asterisk." And when you're looking at the EAF form, um, for each item, you can either say no or small in one column and moderate to large in the second one, and it's only large if it has an asterisk. Otherwise, it's moderate. So I'm just going to try to walk you through, and then you stop me if you have a question. I'm really going to stick to, I'm not going to go over every single items, only the ones that are sort of moderate or large. So, impact on land, I've marked as large. Um, the action may involve construction on land where the depth to water table is less than three feet, and that's referring to wetlands, um, floodplain and other watery features on the existing site. And then I'm skipping down to one.
Can I interject to?
Go ahead, yeah.
Because I already have a comment, sorry.
No, that's okay.
On that first one. So we have, um, uh, site information borings, uh, that demonstrate that the depth to water table, and this is reflected in the EAR, the, the narrative document that's attached to the Part One, that the depth to water table is between three and five feet. Um, I think on our EAF Part One, it still says, um, less than three, I think it says two feet, so we need to update our Part One to reflect the, um, site investigation that was done in December.
So the EAR says three to five?
Three to five. Yeah, I think the EAF has not been updated yet, though, to reflect that new site information. So we'll do that for the next submission.
Yeah, keep track of things like that, please.
Absolutely, yeah.
Good, good. Okay, should I go?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, now I'm going down to one.
If that process is okay, I'll continue with that.
Good input, jump in. Um, one E, um, construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, um, it will require ongoing construction if there's, especially if there are three potential tenant spaces. So this could go on over time, even though, um, the main structure might be built in a certain phase, there will be improvements that will be needed for those additional phases.
Can I interject there?
Yes, go ahead.
So again, there, in the EAF, we do note that the construction period is twelve months with one phase. The entire site is going to be built out all at once. We don't know yet if it's going to be three tenants, or one tenant, or two tenants. We don't know whether there will not need to be site plan amendments once those tenants, um, are identified and secured, um, but at this point, we are building out the entire building, the entire site at once in one phase, twelve months of construction. So I just note that because this is contrary to the information that, that we've provided in the EAF, and it's marked as a, as a large impact, so, um, that's why I point that out.
Okay.
So maybe.
Maybe moderate?
You make a note to check that.
Okay.
Double check, and, um, yeah, it might end up being moderate as opposed to large. Um, and meanwhile, also, uh, board members feel free to jump in with questions or comments as well at each point, because it's easier to do it that way than going back.
Okay, and then one F, um, the project may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, and that's, I have a note there, it says extensive area of disturbance, twenty-five plus acres coastal erosion area, oh, wait a minute, no, just extensive area of disturbance to twenty-five acres, and that's marked as large. It's the asterisk.
On this one, I would just note, um, while our total disturbance area is about twenty-five acres, there will be no more than five acres disturbed at a time, and all of the proper erosion and sediment control measures will be in place per New York State DEC requirements during the period of which those five acres are being disturbed. So, um, just noting that.
Is the five acres at a time in the EAR?
It's in the, I believe it would be in the SWIP. Is that, that's a SWIP, yeah, that would be in the SWIP that was submitted.
But it's not, okay.
And I.
It's in the SWIP?
It's either in the SWIP or in the EAR. It's definitely in the SWIP. I'm not sure if that particular point made it to the EAR.
Okay, well, I can take a look. Yeah.
The building itself, right, but, so the pad will be, and please.
So how do you?
Jump up and correct me if I'm describing this wrong.
Twelve, twelve months, and the building is that big? I mean, I don't know what, I guess the concern is.
You're only going to dump it five acres at a, you're going to bring in fill, five acres at a time, is that what I'm saying?
So the pad, the pad will be done five acres at a time, and then once the pad is, is, you know, there and, and stabilized, then the building goes up.
But does that mean you're only going to grade, like enough for, like?
Excuse me.
Each of the pads and then regrade the next phase and then regrade, because this.
This is starting to get outside of my area.
Yeah, I think this is.
Here comes an expert to tell us.
I should mention I'm here with Owen McFarland Johnson, Blythe Harvey, and then two representatives from Skanal, Jack Kelly and then Dan Madrigal.
Thanks.
So the building will be brought up to grade, but it'll be stabilized every five acre, so there's not going to be more than five acres disturb it at any one time. So that involves temporary sediment, temporary, um, erosion sediment control practice and permanent in terms of, um, stone, crushed stone for the base of the concrete.
Is there someplace on the map that shows the five acre areas that you're disturbing at a time?
Uh, our, our, um, erosion sediment control plans have phasing where they, it'll show, you know, the five acres that are disturbed. Um, I think there's a total of six phases we're showing the plans, and they're all less than five acres besides the building pad.
Okay, so, okay, so it, you, it's six phases and they're all less than five acres? Is that, is that?
Right, besides the building pad, but that'll be stabilized as it's, as it's constructed.
So the sedimentation control is in six phases?
The phasing for the entire site is in six phases.
Is this, is this in the EAR? Is it listed, described somewhere in there?
Um, yeah, and it's, it's in the report and it's in the SWIP as well.
Okay, all right, so, six, so six phases for erosion sedimentation control?
Uh, yeah, the six phases for the construction for the entire site.
And then the, so it's six phases, but there's three, how many pads are there?
There's just one.
So there's one pad, and it, that pad is going to be constructed in six phases?
No, the pad, the pad could be instructed, constructed all at once, and that's an eight acre, eight acre, eight acre pad, but it'll be stabilized as it's brought up to grade with, you know, mulch, straw, um, following all DEC regulations for stabilization of that. And once it's, um, got a hardscape on it, it's permanently stabilized.
All right, so I'm, I'm probably going to need to, uh, it's, I'm having a hard time picturing this, but, so I'd like to have an opportunity to take a look and then I'm going to, you know, ask you questions, so you can walk me through this, because, so what's the eight acre thing?
The building pad itself. It's a three hundred eighty-eight thousand square foot pad.
But that's going to be built in hunks?
No, but it'll be stabilized as it's, as it's built, so there's not going to be more than five acres at any one time.
You keep on saying built.
The pad's taking up eight acres?
Built at source.
Yes.
Okay, so twenty-five acres is, are we considering the other?
The entire site, right.
Yeah, but, yeah, the, the thing is, though, that the total disturbance area is still going to be twenty-five acres.
Right.
So it's still to be determined whether it's a large, you know, impact or not. And again, we're.
The overall is twenty-five acres, that.
Yeah, so we're, we're following the guidance of the EAF form, which is moderate to large impact may occur, which does not yet imply or indicate significance of the impact. We know that, and it's, um, that's to be determined later, but I think it's still, probably can be checked as a large impact may occur, even though it may be phased, it's still a large area of impact.
And the explanation they provided would be part of the documentation that this board would accept, I guess.
Right, and it is, it's helpful information to know that, but, um, again, I.
We can try to further clarify that in our next submission, and I know, you know, we, um, McFarland Johnson already has authorization to, to speak with Liz outside of the meeting.
Yes.
So we can, you know, schedule that between McFarland Johnson and Liz, and I want to just note this, so I don't forget it at the end. We also want to ask for permission for McFarland Johnson to, to interface directly with MJ Engineering as well, if we need that further authorization.
I'll put a note on that, too.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure that one changes or not, but I'll, I'll take a look.
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah. Um, so one G, proposed action may or may not be within a coastal erosion hazard area, and that's related to Clove Creek, so that, that doesn't change. That's a mo, that's a large impact.
I'm sorry, I have another comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So coastal erosion hazard areas or SEHA's are things that are, it's a specifically defined thing under the New York State DEC regs and the Environmental Conservation Law under Part 505, and New York State DEC has a, a map of all of the, the SEHA's throughout the state. There are none in Dutchess County. So I, I understand the point about it being, you know, next to Clove Creek, which is a tributary to the Fishkill Creek, which then goes to the Hudson, but for this particular question, um, we're, we're just, we're not with a coastal erosion hazard area.
And is that in the EAR?
Um.
Well, I can look at the mapping. I thought that the, the source of it originally was from looking at the mapping.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's where I got it from originally.
And we can further clarify that in our.
So you're saying it's not in Dutchess County?
There, yeah, according to the New York State DEC website that has the mapping for all the SEHA's.
Yeah, and this is from.
There's none in Dutchess.
Yeah, there's an environmental resource mapper, too.
Yeah.
That's originally where it came from.
Yeah.
So I'll double check it.
Okay, thank you.
And then extensive fill required, area and depth and construction, this is one H, extensive fill required, area and depth and construction on land and floodplain adjacent to stream and wetlands over an aquifer. And that's also, well, I should have been a check there, large impact.
And I'll just generally refer to the, the report submitted by the, um, by our professional, um, uh, geologist, uh, the TerraCon report that was submitted, uh, with our last submission.
Yep, and that, that would definitely be something that our consultant, once we hire them, would be looking into.
Exactly.
Okay, so page two, um, impacts on surface water. Um, and in the header, I just, you know, made a list, surface water resources include coastal waterfront area, again, we'll have to double check that. Uh, Clove Creek, tributary to Fishkill Creek and Hudson River, which is a, a Class C trout spawning stream, um, and water body, it's on the water body inventory slash priority water bodies list, uh, New York State regulated wetland WF twenty-four, and a hundred-foot buffer and extensive floodplains related to Clove Creek. And according to that, so I'm on item three D, which, uh, action may involve, uh, construction within or adjoining freshwater tidal wetland or in the better banks of any other water body, and elimination of a federal wetland, which is a man-made pond. There is one pond in there that is highlighted as federal wetland, and that will be eliminated. It's a small pond. Um, three E, uh, action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments, and that's extensive area of disturbance of twenty-five acres, and that's also marked as a large impact. And again, this is, you know, the overall. Item, uh, three G, action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water, and this is based on the plan, numerous outfall points, there's five of them from a proposed stormwater facilities, so that's also marked as a potentially large impact.
So that, I just want to note, right, it's stormwater outfalls, but here the question is talking about discharge of wastewater to surface waters. We don't have any discharge of wastewater directly to surface waters. We have discharge of, frankly, discharge of wastewater from the septic underground.
Underground, but this is what's left from.
But this is.
Discharge from stormwater. Do you want to weigh in?
So, right, stormwater versus wastewater. I, I see those as being two separate things.
I mean, I wouldn't be considered wastewater if you.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's G and H are talking about two different types of, one's wastewater and one is stormwater, so.
Okay, so G would be, okay, so G is as, is, is, would be large, and I guess it could be changed to moderate.
Yeah, we, we, we have zero discharge of wastewater to surface water.
Right, no, I'm saying if it was stormwater, I'm suggesting.
But that's not what the question is.
Okay, all right, fine. Yep, got it, got it, sorry.
So we can change that one, G.
That'll just be.
No or small impact.
No or small, okay, got it.
But then H would be more relevant to stormwater at this stage.
Gotcha. All right, any comments on H?
On H, um, just to note that, you know, what, obviously, water quality practices are, are going to be in place according to New York State DEC requirements with the SWIP, um, uh, to protect water quality from any stormwater discharge from the, the stormwater facilities.
Right, so that, I guess that would be mitigation. Um, three I, um, proposed action may affect water quality of water bodies within or downstream of the site or proposed area, and it's described as potential for discharge to wetland and streams, including discharge points from stormwater, and that has also been indicated as a large impact.
Yeah, and just the same comment that there'll be water quality practices in place.
Mitigation.
Yeah, yeah, and currently, there's zero stormwater management on the site, so we'll be adding water quality improvements.
Zero stormwater?
There's no stormwater management practices on the site currently.
Oh, you mean now?
In the current, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
The existing condition.
And you'll be adding stormwater management practices?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, got it, got it. Um, all right, and so three K, uh, action may require construction of a new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities, and that's described as a large-scale subsurface disposal system is proposed on top of four feet of fill on top of an aquifer, and that's marked as a large impact.
And I'll just refer back to the, the geologist's report that we submitted that indicates that there will be no impact to the aquifer as a result of that, um, septic system, and the septic system will be built and designed in accordance with the state requirements.
All right, and then, um, page three, impact on groundwater, yes, and again, there's a brief summary. Underlying, the site is principal aquifer and primary aquifer identified as stratified drift aquifer in the sprout and Fishkill Creek Valley. Um, site is subject to aquifer protection overlay, that's the town's, uh, zoning designation, and a critical environmental area, um, CEA, um, which is also an aquifer protection area that was established back in, I guess, the eighties, late eighties. And, um, so four A is, um, action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells, and that's marked as a large impact.
So in our EAF, we indicated that the water demand for the facility is, is three thousand eight hundred and fifty gallons per day. Um, we have responses from both County Department of Health and Village of Fishkill that adequate capacity does exist. Um.
Adequate capacity.
Exists in the, the wells. Uh, so we're not going to be, um, at introducing a demand that the wells can't handle.
I know that I had a question. One of my comments in a review memo was there was some estimate of 150 gallons per day of water usage by, I think it was employees?
Yeah.
And I thought that didn't seem correct.
Taking showers?
So there... And again, correct me if I'm wrong, engineers in the room.
And I just took the number of parking spaces and thought, well, if that's employees, and even if they had...
So my understanding is that, according to the Department of Health, there is a set equation for how to calculate the demand based on... And I don't know for warehouse if it's employees or... Is it employees? Based on employees. So that's how the... Excuse me, the calculation, sorry, was performed.
What the... But the 150... Okay, so I'm going to go back and revisit the 150 gallons per day, because that's what threw me off.
Yeah, so we represented it as 3,850 gallons per day, which there's capacity...
And that's for the entire facility?
Yes. And I believe there was a report submitted that showed those calculations. But we can further clarify that in the next submission as well, or at least point out where those calculations are that have already been submitted.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. So 4D. Action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater. And that, again, is a large-scale subsurface sewage disposal system is proposed over an aquifer. And then moving on to 4H. Addition of four feet of fill over the entire site, which is located over groundwater resource and surrounded by surface waters, as noted above. And that also was a large impact.
Yeah, that's similar to D, but it then goes on to cover surface waters. See, although that, you know, this number four is supposedly impact on groundwater or an aquifer, so... Surface waters would be a different question, which I think we covered that in the previous section.
Oh, so you're suggesting get rid of...
Yeah, because we already covered that in three impacts on surface water.
I'll get rid of that last part of the phrase on 4H.
Okay.
Impact on flooding, it's marked yes. And I'm going to try to summarize these. So A is development in a designated floodway, which is marked as large impact. B is development within 100-year floodplain, again, large. Development within a 500-year floodplain, which is 5C, large impact. 5D. Action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. That's also large impact. And 5E. Action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding, and again, that's large impact.
So if I could just mention, we're not proposing any development within a floodway. So for A, there's zero development within a floodway. We are proposing development, yes, within the 100- and 500-year floodplain, and that obviously has to do with the importation of fill to actually bring the site out of that 100-year floodplain. And we're going to be engaging in the process with FEMA for the conditional letter of map revision regarding the fill, and then after construction, an actual letter of map provision. So we will be bringing the site out of the floodplain. In addition, with respect to E. According to our calculations, the project actually reduces stormwater flow based, as you compare it to a pre-construction condition, because of our stormwater treatment and detention that's being proposed for the site. So we would argue that we would not be contributing to floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. There won't be additional flooding as a result of this construction.
The way that I looked at this had to do with the fact that if you look at flood mapping, the entire site is...
In a floodplain, yes.
In a floodplain, 100-year floodplain.
Yeah, we're not disputing that.
So what?
Where would the definition of designated floodway come from? That's A.
I'm going to leave that to the engineers.
It's a 100-year floodplain, it's designated by...
Well, but is there a difference between a designated floodway and a 100- or 500-year floodplain? I think there is, but what is that difference?
I don't know, I can look that up.
It's shown on the survey. It shows the mapped area of the floodway, which is directly adjacent to the stream. And we're not anywhere near the floodway.
You're saying this is the designated floodway?
There's a designated floodway over Clove Creek, which is within the floodplain.
Yeah, that's what A is asking about.
Okay, I'll revisit that one.
So tentatively...
You're saying designated floodway is different than the 100-year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, why would they ask it twice? They only need it to ask each one once.
I know, but I didn't know it was...
No, that's why I was trying to emphasize what is the difference between a designated floodway and the 100-year and 500-year floodplains?
Okay, so I'll look at that one, and that one might change.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a few things to look at on that one. And then on the next page, number six, no impacts on air. Sorry, it's number six on Page 4. Bottom of Page 4, impact on plants and animals. And that's marked yes. And then there was verbiage in the EAR that talked about the bog turtle? But that didn't... I don't know why that was there. But the site's potential plant and animal resources, and this is according to the AF mapper, include oak tulip tree forest, Appalachian oak hickory forest, red cedar rocky summit, and timber rattlesnake habitat. So all of those items are marked related to those having to do with potential reduction in population. That's A. B, reduction or degradation of any habitat. C, reduction in population, loss of individuals. D, reduction and degradation of any habitat used by a species of special concern. E, diminish the capacity of... Oh, no, that's not marked, sorry. F, the proposed action may result in removal of and ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant community. And may... G is interfering with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat. And H, conversion of more than 10 acres of forest grassland or any other place, any other habitat, locally important habitat. And commercial, industrial projects involving use of herbicides or pesticides, again, not a known thing. But when I was looking at the EAR, it talked, again, about the bog turtle, but it said that the rattlesnake habitat was ongoing, so that hasn't been addressed yet.
So that's something that we can further clarify in our next submission. The bog turtle, I think there was previously some studies for bog turtles done on the site years ago.
Okay.
So just to cover all the bases, I think that's why that was in there. With respect to the timber rattlesnake, McFarland-Johnson has done onsite investigations and determined that there's no suitable habitat for timber rattlesnake, and obviously...
But they haven't written it up yet.
Yeah, so we'll need to... There is indication of that in the EAR, that there was onsite work. Sorry, I've been sick the last couple of days, so I'm sorry if I'm having trouble articulating myself very clearly tonight. There is indication in the EAR that there was onsite investigation performed. We can make that more clear as to who performed it, when, and all of those details, and what the results were.
Okay, I mean, I can do a word search for rattlesnake in there, but all I found was that it wasn't completed.
So obviously, if during construction, a rattlesnake is... A timber rattlesnake is found, we'll follow all DEC protocols for protection of that rattlesnake.
That would be mitigation, yeah.
Absolutely.
But, you know, first, I guess I need to look in the EAR and find out where you're describing. There's conclusion of the report? Because there was one aspect I looked at, and it said that it wasn't...
It's in the narrative, yeah. So we'll have to make sure that that's updated, and that's some of the work that we were going to do for our next submission.
So should I look for it, or does that still need to be done?
I would say, why don't you wait until our next submission, and then all of these things hopefully should be clarified. The other thing is that we also have correspondence, which is in the materials from New York State DEC Natural Heritage Program, that talks about the Appalachian oak hickory forest and the oak tulip tree forest being documented within 200 yards of the site, but not on the site, not on the project site.
This is in the EAR? Because I tried word searching all of these things, and I had no luck at all.
So this is correspondence that was, I believe, in an appendix to the EAR, direct correspondence from DEC.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Is it referenced in the text?
It might be.
Okay, okay.
I can look for it now, but I don't want to...
I mean, I don't... If you want to try to clarify it, that might make more sense than...
Yeah, I think what we'd like to do for our next submission, and we tried to prepare a little bit for our own notes tonight, is kind of go question by question and point you exactly where in the materials the answer is for each of those.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I honestly...
Just as a roadmap.
I word search, and sometimes just nothing would come up.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of spending... It's a way of trying to save some time to not just read through the whole thing looking, so...
Yeah, and then on the rock... Or sorry, the red cedar rock summit. I know that that is notified, it's on the EAF mapper, but DEC did not flag that as being a natural community that it is in this area. So we may have to just look into that further, because I don't know why it was flagged on the mapper, but DEC did not note it as anything significant here.
Oh, then I'll wait for clarification. Yeah, that would be great. Let's see. Impact... Excuse me. So I'm moving over to the top of Page 6. Impact on aesthetic resources. And it's marked yes. And the one resource we're noting in A is visible from any officially designated resource, which would be Hudson Highland State Park, Route 9 Gateway Corridor, and Route 9 Bike Route. So those are a few... There's sort of three resources, and that's marked as moderate to large. I know that at the last meeting, we had a discussion about a visual thing that was going to be, I think, revised to clarify what we're looking at.
Right, so we had a visual from Route 9 that was prepared, and I believe at the last meeting... I'm sorry, I heard it...
No, it just needs clarification.
A bird's eye, right? I think the request was for a bird's eye view of the site
Correct.
to kind of understand the spatial relationship with everything.
And also labeling of what the image kind of, you know, labeling, what are we looking at?
So that would be part of the next submission.
Absolutely, yeah. McFarland-Johnson is working on like a static image as a bird's eye view, yes.
Good, okay.
And I think we also have information that was submitted early on in the materials indicating the location of the trails at the Hudson Highland State Park, and noting that the distance of those trails from the site. So I just, I note that as something to take a look at in reference to this section.
So that's a visual section?
Yes, for your 9A. Sorry, that was the trail... I think it was an appendix in the EAR, is that right?
It's called Trail Adjacencies.
Trail Adjacencies Map is what it's called.
Okay, so it's not in the visual section, or it's in Trail Adjacencies?
It's an appendix to the EAR.
All right, so I guess we can just kind of go through the... I don't think we need to go point by point on the visual ones. So I guess I'll look for the Trail Adjacencies Map.
Yes, and we will be submitting further visuals.
And there's a section in the EAR that refers to that? I would assume?
Yes, it does, yes. On Page 14 to 15. It's Appendix L. On Page 14 to 15 of the EAR.
So EAR, Page?
14 to 15.
Okay.
And also Appendix L, which is referenced in there.
Okay. All right, and then impact on historic and archaeological. I'm at the bottom of Page 6. And I think that's... Nope, that one we marked as no impact, sorry.
We got a no effect letter from SHIP-AL.
And, yep. Impact on open space and recreation. Again, that's... Let's see. 11A, impairment of natural functions or ecosystem services. So there's parts of the EAR to look at. And appendix, related appendix. So I'm going to skip over those. Impact on critical environmental area. Again, that refers to the aquifer. And so the only item that's noted there is 12B. Reduction in the quality of the resource or characteristic, which was a basis for designation of the CEA.
I just want to give you a quick spoiler alert for the next submission that's related to the open space and recreation. We will be showing a public trail easement on that north side of the site, as was discussed in previous meetings, for access to that state park.
That's great.
Thanks for mentioning that.
All right, let's see if I can get us to the end of this. Page 8. 13, impact on transportation, right up at the top. And the only two that are marked for large impact. 13E, alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. And F, extensive parking impervious for 217 cars and 132 truck-loading trailer spaces, increased need for transit access and pedestrian bicycle accommodations. And then moving on to...
13A, there's a misplaced asterisk in the small impact box. Because we don't... We wouldn't say large impact for a small impact, but...
Oh, because, are you talking about 13A?
Yeah, that's what I said.
If it's no, it would just be a check, and if it's small, it's with the asterisk.
Well, is it supposed to be small as opposed to no? Because we can't have an asterisk for large and small. If you want to indicate it as small, then make a new category.
A new thing, okay.
Two asterisks, or whatever.
Something like that, or another thing.
So is that supposed to be small impact?
Yeah.
Okay, so make that two asterisks. And then put a key in for that.
Okay. And then 13E, alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. And that was a large impact. Again, this is a transportation thing. 13F. Also refers to extensive parking impervious, 217 cars, 132 truck-loading trailer spaces, increased need for transit access and pedestrian bicycle accommodations. So those are both large. And then no impact on energy, noise, odor, and light. There's a moderate impact. 15A, sound above noise levels established by local regulation, and that probably... That just has to do with construction. And then on the next page, another moderate impact. Light, lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing conditions, and I think that could be addressed by adjustment of some of the lighting, some of the comments I've made, so that one could go away. And then Page 10, consistency with community plans. And this has to do with Town Official Comprehensive Plan with objectives about aquifers and groundwater, promoting walking, pedestrian, and bicycle ways, and connecting communities, roads, and parks. So 17A, land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. And that's really in reference to the state park. And that's a moderate to large impact.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that. I was confused about that one, because we're right next door to Dutchess Mall and the Home Depot.
Understood.
In an industrial district, so... right next door to the Duchess Mall and the Home Depot and an industrial district, so...
Well, it could be moderate, does the board have any feeling one way or another?
Moderate.
Yeah, we could probably change that to moderate.
And then 17C, inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, and that one's also marked as large impact.
Again, that one confused me a little, because we're zoning compliant, this particular site is identified in the comp plan with a potential development size that's far larger than what we're proposing, and we are in an industrial district, so I wasn't sure what the large impact was referring to there.
Yeah, and this also, you know, had to do with the adjacency to the state park, but also the comprehensive plan has goals and objectives about pedestrian ways and the corridor overlay district on Route Nine, and I think it would be helped if we had a better visual impact illustration, just that's a little more clear, and also a little bit more attention to, I feel that the pedestrian connection is pretty important on this site, because you will have theoretically people driving trucks who are maybe going to be parked for several hours, I don't really know what kind of facilities are there for truck drivers, but, you know, typically, they may be parking their truck, their truck's being unloaded, there's a period of time where they may need to go get a meal, and I know there's, you know, a little fast food restaurant right in front, but if there was a better pedestrian connection, or some way to be able to use bikes more easily from that site, I think that would help.
But wasn't that what we went over in the last meeting, that they couldn't put a sidewalk in because they didn't have enough room?
Well, I know they don't, because there's an easement that restricts it, and, but, so we're basically faced with the possibility where we're usually asking for sidewalks and pedestrian amenities whenever we can, and it's just simply because an easement has been established that somehow can't be negotiated, or, I don't know, so I feel like I'm not convinced it's impossible. That's the problem here, is that I understand there's a constraint with the configuration of the property as provided, but it seems like there might be some way to come up with another way to provide pedestrian access or bicycle access.
Is there, on the other side of the property, not where the driveway is, on the other side?
I think there was, I made a comment about...
Yeah, you made a comment last time, that we could maybe hook in, is there any way we could put a path?
On the north side of the site?
On the north side of the property, the Duchess Community Colleges or home...
So they'd come around to that parking area.
So that would require some additional disturbance potentially.
If we're talking the sidewalk, but again, I don't know what it is, I don't necessarily say driveway, just talk about a path.
I would say at this point, we're still, we're still going to be getting more information, but at this point, I think it's good to flag this as may have a large impact, may not be significant though, and it may be able to be mitigated somehow with addressing...
I guess it's just hard to believe with all the pavement, that there can't be some way to delineate a pedestrian way around.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's good that...
That's the part I was like, there's all this pavement.
I think it's good to flag it as large.
I'm trying to see, so a pedestrian way would go where?
Well, to get over to Route Nine, so that if somebody needed to walk along there and go to the restaurant across the way, or the, just, oh, you know, because otherwise, it's a huge parking area.
But you're saying from the north, because, you know, the golf course is pretty, the old golf course is pretty big, so I'm trying to visualize all the way from over there, coming all the way over here to walk on the side of Duchess Community College building, I'm just trying to...
Right, I understand, but we're all finagling because...
You don't have to go that far.
They could just go...
All the way over, because you got, even on...
Again, you're going to have an easement either with Home Depot, or...
You got to go to McDonald's.
And then aren't there wetlands on that site?
There are wetlands in that area, yeah, yeah, so I think we can also provide some...
No, no, I understand, I guess, I guess the concern here is that the constraint is an easement, it's a delineated area in pretty much a hardscape, so there's lots of hardscape there that isn't necessarily being used, and I guess the concept was that easement couldn't be just expanded, or can't there be some kind of, so that's what I'm saying, is it's hard to believe in all that hardscape, that there couldn't be a way to bring a pedestrian, so that's...
What makes sense to me would be between Home Depot and the other project, you know, that project is there, because in the front of that property, or isn't there two pads that are possible for possible future food, or, you know, you know, on the...
So you're saying...
Well, you know, what I'm just saying is where the other project in front, between that and Home Depot, like in that area, to come up there, because eventually, like where McDonald's is, there's two pads on the other side that might be future, you know, food or something like that, so I think going all the way to the other side may not be really, because we don't know until...
You were saying two pads, P-A-D-S, as opposed to paths, P-A-T-H-S, yeah, I was hearing pads.
Site pads.
Yeah, site pads, yep.
That's, I just, I believe there could be a solution, so...
Yeah, I mean, look, if we can work one out, then that would be great, but the problem is, we're just not in total control of that, because we have the easement, we're not the fee owner, so...
Anyway, I think with this discussion and these questions, I think it's good to flag this as maybe large impact, how significant that will be is to be determined, but I think it's good leaving it flagged like you did.
Was that 17C, I think, is where we were?
Yeah.
Okay.
So shall we go to E?
So E, change in the density of development not supported by existing infrastructure is distant, so that is all about hooking into sewer, and there are other uses nearby that are hooked into sewer, and the medical park is hooking into sewer, so I think, you know, that's also one of the reasons that we're, you know, having consulting with the hydrogeologist, so we can get some advisement on how important that is, or not.
Right.
So, so we'll leave that as large, I believe, and try to seek answers to that. And then 17G, may induce secondary development and impacts residential or commercial development, not included in the proposed action, and that's also large, noting that that secondary development could, it could be a boon, you know, but it could potentially be a large impact, there could be a demand for more residential development, so. And then consistency with community character, 18B, create a demand for additional community services, schools, police, and fire, probably police and fire, and 18D, may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources, again, that's the bikeway, the, I'm sorry, the Route Nine corridor, which we happen to know is used by bicycles pretty frequently. So that's the draft, we've gotten some good feedback.
I think this was a...
I have, yeah, some direction to look into some things, although my inclination is to not spend a lot of time looking into things, and for, you know, certain ones I can look into, but other ones, wait for the next submittal.
I think that might be a more effective use of time.
Okay.
Because we do intend to try to provide kind of a roadmap for each of these questions, where to look in our materials.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this was a helpful exercise for the board to go through, and probably for the applicant as well, actually, it turns out, because it does flag some of the remaining questions and documentation that we would want to see, and then, of course, this is all hinging on the possible hiring of a hydrogeologist to look at the studies that you submitted, and confirm, or come up with other types of recommendations, so I don't at this point, and I don't think any of the other board members would anticipate moving ahead with going to a determinative significance, but I think this was a good discussion, and of course, at some point in the future, the board will have to go through an actual, more complete and updated draft EAF Part Two, there are even a few parts of Part One that'll have to be updated before getting to the determination of significance phase.
Sure.
So, having said that, I don't know, Dominic or Dennis, do you have any additional thoughts before we talk about the hiring of a hydrogeologist?
Yes, sir.
I have no comments.
And any other comments from board members on that particular aspect? Okay, so what I'd like to propose is that the board go into executive session to discuss the possible hiring of a hydrogeologist consultant, pretty sure that would qualify, Dominic, if I'm correct, about the potential hiring or appointment of a particular person or corporation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what I think we'll ask the board for is a motion to go into executive session to discuss the potential hiring of a hydrogeologist.
Can I ask two questions before that motion is made?
Sure.
One, can we do the motion to authorize McFarland Johnson to speak with Mr. Lynch?
Just in case it gets read.
And my second question would be, do you anticipate further dialogue with us after you're out of executive session?
Yes, yes to both of those questions.
Okay, great.
But we certainly, why don't we go ahead and authorize direct communication between the applicant and MJ Engineering, make sure we get that done, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony moves it, Brad seconds it, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, and so, yes, we do, we do plan to come back into public open session, and, because we're not going to decide anything in the executive session, so what we will do is ask for a motion for the board to enter executive session to discuss the possible hiring of a hydrogeologist consultant, we'd like to include all of our board consultants and the planning board secretary to stay for that executive session, but ask that everyone in the audience wait in the lobby, and also that we will, once we get that motion done, we would shut down the broadcast and recording, and then we're going to come back to full session, open session, to make any decisions on that. So, would someone like to make that motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
I think Anthony moved it, and Bob seconds it, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries, so...
Just give me one second.
Yeah, we'll get things organized.
See you.
All right, so the board did discuss the four proposals that we received, and so here is the motion, which is based on our discussion, that I will ask for a motion as follows, based on the board's discussion of the qualifications, experience, and costs of the four consultants who submitted proposals to the board, is there a motion to recommend that the town board approve a contract with Paul Rubin, PG, of HydroQuest, as the planning board's preferred consultant to provide hydrogeologic and water resources review services to the planning board pertaining to the Fishville Commerce Center project application? Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Anthony moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so that carries, so the next step will be to forward the board's recommendation to the supervisor and town board with the relevant materials to the preferred consultant as soon as possible. The town board's next available meeting will be on Wednesday, March 5th, with the submission deadline of Wednesday, February 26th, so there actually is a town board meeting on February 19th, but the submission deadline for that is already passed, so once the town board hopefully authorizes a contract with our preferred consultant, we'll confirm with the consultant and forward relevant, any additional relevant application materials, and then, you know, work out more details, I think we're going to need an actual service contract agreement from the consultant for signing, because he didn't submit one, a draft of one of those.
No, we need to do that, and then I'll, you'll need to sign it, you'll need to sign it.
Yeah, right, but I think we can do that once, once the town board authorizes.
The town board would take it.
So that's, that's where we are, so I think, I think he will be a very good consultant to do the review of the materials that we need, so I think that's basically about it for tonight, that's, we got through what we needed to do, but if you have any other questions, I think from our discussion about the preliminary EAF Part Two, we have a number of things, updates, haven't gone through it, additional submissions from the applicant team, and then we'll, we'll wait and see what the town board does with our recommendation on the consultant, but that should go smoothly, I would think.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight and for the discussion, and we look forward to keeping the process moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, thank you very much.
Thank you, hope you feel better.
Good night, Jennifer, thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, so Jody, I think, I think we're okay with you need to go, the only other thing I was going to update the board on is that the ZBA public hearing was held on the planning board's application for appealing the determination of the building inspector, the public hearing was closed, and the ZBA will continue their discussion on February 18th, I do plan to attend that, and we'll see what happens with that. I think they, the ZBA may go into closed session to seek...
I think that's a very good possibility.
Seek advice of their attorney, maybe I'll ask to say it, that, and see what they say, but maybe not.
I don't like these long moves.
Anyway.
Red flag will be drawn.
Anyway, so does anyone have anything else of interest for the board at this point?
Of course.
No.
Is this poll related to Pee Wee Herman poll?
We didn't ask him that, that could change everything, that could change everything, I would think.
I'm going to make a joke.
All right, so the next meeting is Thursday, March 13th, the submission deadline for that meeting is Wednesday, February 26th, right, Debbie?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Move.
So moved.
Anthony moves, Bob seconds, we're out of here.
And we're all going to move.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.